Okay, first up, we have a public hearing regarding the COVID-19 back-to-school blueprint as required by the Education Stabilization Fund and the CARES Act.
Yep, the blueprint has not changed since last time. This was in front of the board, which was back on April 18th of this year, so.
All right, well, first, we have to conduct the public hearing, and so, um, once that's completed, then the board can take action. But, um, for the public hearing, I'll make the first call for any public comments regarding the back-to-school blueprint. Hearing none, I'll make the second call, a second call for any public comment on the Hudson School District back-to-school blueprint. And final, and third and final call for any public comment regarding the COVID-19 back-to-school Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, have a motion by Kerry, second by Rob. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. And then, next up, under our topics for discussion, possible action is the COVID-19 back-to-school blueprint. As Nick pointed out, this is no change from the last one. This is required twice a year, so we did this in April, and it's now October, so that was our six-month period, and now we're back with the same plan. Any discussion at this time? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve. There's a motion by Bob, second by Kerry. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the back-to-school blueprint is approved. Next up, um, yes, is there somebody that wants to speak? Oh, okay, um, I'm hearing things. All right, so, uh, first up, under, um, topics for discussion, I guess, would be the update regarding the certified staff compensation system, which we had asked that this be brought to us in October, and Andrea, this is yours, so.
It is.
Under HR, why don't you give us, um, the summary before you introduce our guest?
Sure, and we're each going to be taking a slide, and as you said, you asked back in August that we come with an update on our progress to date, and we've been working hard, we've had a few meetings in between, and really have had phenomenal progress over the last couple of meetings, where we're heading in a specific direction, which we're going to talk about tonight, and, um, hoping that the board will be supportive of the direction we're going, so that we can really start putting numbers to the concepts as we move forward. So, really, the idea is the development of pathways that honor our guiding principles. And then Emily Sorensen will be up next with the explanation of the visual.
So, uh, something that was mentioned, um, at the last meeting is that possibly a need to make an adjustment to, um, this visual, because we were missing the word excellence. And as we were, uh, reflecting on that, um, I think we realized that we assumed that, that all this work that a teacher would be doing and following these pathways, um, to professional growth and leadership, um, would automatically lead to that, but we should never assume. And so, uh, Andrea has, um, so graciously added to our visual here, and as you can see, that, um, the analogy with the fruit would be the fruit of the labor of those that are in it, in the system, which then would result in, um, the student achievement and growth, which is represented there by the, uh, basket, and that is where we would see excellence, as a result of all this work done by teachers, following a pathway through our new compensation system.
Next up is Rachel Mueller.
Hello, we are very excited about the salary structure that we have been compiling, and this is developed through three concepts. And so, there's the salary progression pathway, the professional growth pathway, and performance bonus, and I will be talking about the salary progression pathway. This is similar to the traditional steps concept that had been used in the past and used by many districts currently. Um, every successful year, the staff would then move and progress one step. We would be sure to have a BA base as well as an MA base. We realize that some of the steps do need to phase out beyond the 15 years. We're exploring some additional ways to, and flexible ways, that we could, um, help those teachers that will max out on the structure. By using this, we believe that it does follow our key guiding principles.
Then Jim Dolan.
Good evening, um, I'm here to talk about the professional growth pathways, very similar to the old lanes that we used to have. Um, this committee did a really nice job of putting out a survey and getting a lot of information back from our staff about what they thought would be appropriate for professional growth steps. Um, you know, likely we'll have credits as an option, but also, you know, taking a look at other alternative pathways that demonstrate professional growth, and would equal those, um, those lane changes, per se. Uh, I think the key quote that we have up here is, we define it, the committee will define it, and then the staff can really take a look at that and then plot their own course. And so, really, it gives some ownership to the staff, and when you take a look at the guiding principles, it's really about that retention piece. We're seeing a group of educators who currently, right now, are looking for that ability to kind of control that pathway.
And Dolph.
Yes, and I just wanted to say, as a team, one of the things that we talked about is, uh, the teacher salary structure team, is that we're more committed than ever with the work that we've been doing, going in this direction. I can say also, seven out of seven of our building principals are 100% behind the direction that we're going, so thank you for allowing us to do this. The performance bonus also connects to that excellent piece. Now, as a board, you may be deciding if this is something that'd be enough of an incentive, and if it would be something that we could afford to do. But unlike our current structure, this is really a collective goal that we'd be working towards to hit, so it'd be an annual type of stipend, uh, something probably under $500, you would kind of decide, um, the amount, and then we could determine if it's linked to our district school goals, um, district goals, school goals, if it's, you know, we're going to break it down 4K to 5th grade, 612, or more of a 4K 5, 68, 912, you know, you could choose to use the school report card as a way to measure that, too. Um, and again, all staff in good standing, um, with good evaluations would receive that bonus, and again, it hits on that piece of recruitment and retention, and also being sustainable, because we'd work it into the system and kind of be able to figure out monetarily what would work.
Then we have Mike Ballard.
Yeah, well, once again, I'd just like to emphasize, you know, just, just the ability of people to come together during these sessions, it's been really impressive, and the dialogue, and the claguality, and the unification of everyone coming together to, to really try to come up with something that, that makes sense. The market is just different. You've heard us say that over and over again, the market for trying to recruit and then retain people here is, uh, is like nothing that many of us have ever witnessed, right? So, trying to identify something that, uh, you know, has a competitive, uh, starting point, I think we all, everyone in the group, understands that at some point, you're going to top out in any salaries, uh, salary structure, right? But how can we recruit and then keep those people that we have recruited with us throughout, throughout their journey in a, in a very predictable, uh, or maybe more of a predictable manner? Uh, we oftentimes refer to those folks as our middle earners, right? So, how can we create something with structure that we can show them, uh, the pathway here at Hudson, uh, so that we are able to, to feel good about retaining them?
Okay, well, I've been trying really hard to not be too excited, but I'm very excited, and I wanted to make sure the board heard that, as well as the people that are willing to come and present with me tonight, is that we've worked really hard on this, and it has been a passion, I think, in the room. The conversations are fantastic, and even something as our last meeting, I think our last meeting was a good example, where I came in with some kind of quirky names for different concepts, and they're like, yeah, no, we got to come up with something that people are going to understand, and that people understand the whys behind it, and so we came up with that, um, the different, the three critical concepts, um, the salary progression pathway, the idea of pathways, so the idea of, um, demonstrating to our staff our commitment to their longevity, as well as their professional growth. That, these ideas do that, and that's exciting, because we do know that the market is wholly different than it was even two years ago. Being able to keep our teachers that we've trained, um, through our professional development, through our experiences, through the work with colleagues, through the work with our leaders in this district, we want to keep them. And TSS 1.0 and 2.0 were a failure in that regard, and we have to do better, and I'm really excited, and I think this committee is excited as well, at the idea that this is better. If you guys are supportive of the direction, um, especially those three concepts, uh, we would like to start putting specifics to it, right? Like, we want to start looking at the numbers of how do we actually accomplish this transition, and what does that look like? So then it gets to the next steps, uh, where you can see the theme is communication. We communicate with staff, again, we have building forums coming up here in the next few weeks, so we would be using a document like this to have some of that communication sent out to the staff. Um, we'll continue to gather input from staff. We want to be very transparent about the fact that there will be a top end. I know that under TSS 2.0, there was a lot of, um, dissatisfaction with the salary caps as associated, or, uh, associated with the performance element of TSS. Um, they still had base building increases, but they weren't eligible for the performance piece. We will have top ends to structures, just like any structure out there does. How we develop that top end with an analysis of comparables and with an analysis of our existing staff matters, and I think, um, communicating that, yes, we still, we value all of our teachers a great deal, and as you get to the top of that structure, if we're able to offer increased flexibilities as it relates to personal time, what we've heard from staff to date is that matters. Having additional personal days, um, is a benefit that they could get in lieu of some increases, but we want to be very transparent about that. So, we're working on having a potential survey going out, uh, specifically addressing that. We have a TAC meeting on November 9th, then we want to finalize these concepts and really develop structures with, I think we're still on the path towards, um, presentation to all of you in January, but we, we are eagerly awaiting any questions you may have.
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob.
Dolph talked about performance bonuses, and then what really stood out to me was the collective effort, and one of the challenges from TSS 2 and before were that teachers, teachers felt very individualized, I had to compete against my peers, and so it's nice to hear that's changing. Maybe it's too early, but do you have thoughts on what, what types of successful group efforts would lead to, I guess, the goal? Do you have an idea of what kind of collaboration you're looking for as a group, or is it too early?
And we did talk a little bit about, because every building has goals, every level has goals already, we have our district goals, and so that's why we kind of have some questions, because as you know, you approve your district goals on an annual basis. Do we loop it to that and make it more of a K-12 or 4K-12 experience, or Dolph can certainly speak to it?
At every level, we have our personal, um, professional learning communities, which really drive our work, and it's the highest impact strategy we can use, so it really merges with what we know will get excellent results for our kids, is that type of collaboration.
Cool, thank you. I had a question, um, I know that, you know, things are still developing and, but you're moving in a direction. Could you provide some clarity with regard to, you know, eligibility on the, uh, steps and lanes? Dolph was very clear that for somebody to be eligible for the performance base bonus, they'd have to be a staff in good standing, that is, you know, not on probation or some kind of performance improvement system. How would that compare to the steps and lanes?
We've talked about that as a committee, and we would be maintaining what we have in place currently, which is you have to be effective in all six standards in order to receive any salary progression or pathway change. So, it'd be that same bar, it's either effective in all six standards or significant discipline. If you have, if you're less than effective or, um, have a significant discipline within that past year, you do not get a step or a lane, and now we revert right back from pathways to steps and lanes, but it's a familiar concept. So, um, the same idea would apply, and everyone's been in agreement with that as well.
Okay, thanks for that clarity, appreciate it. Anyone else have a question, comment?
President?
Heather.
So, I'm curious, I appreciate the collaborative nature, and I know that the cultures within and between buildings are really important, and I wonder, is there still a component here that does reward and acknowledge individual excellence? Because I know that's something that I've heard in the past, is that, you know, tent steps and lanes, kind of everyone got treated the same, how do we really acknowledge and retain the best of the best teachers? Is there a component in here that addresses that?
I can speak to that. Uh, yeah, so as we were, we're talking about this, different, different ways to, you know, um, create your own path, um, I think one thing is, is an application of those things that teachers are doing. So, um, we are going to, like, for instance, even in, in my learning plan, um, those with, with higher, um, you know, graded, graded higher in those areas were people that had put in already a lot of extra training, um, a lot of extra time, um, they had to show some type of leadership, or how they applied their learning, um, and how it affected student achievement. So, um, to me, it doesn't really seem any different than what we've already been doing in there, and those that put in the extra usually benefit, and that's where now, though, it would just be allow for a teacher to be able to, to choose that themselves. Um, and so, like, and picking those ways, and, and part of, of getting to move would be, um, that reflective piece, or like, how did you apply your learning, and how did you affect student achievement?
And that's definitely the biggest area that we're still working through, I would say, because we had the survey, and a lot of people, I forget the number offhand, but over 130 people, I want to say, completed the survey. We've all seen the survey results there, just on the idea of lanes, or the idea of what do you think should progress people? Um, and so, we still were gathering and kind of sifting through, um, because there's all kinds of ideas, um, and we're trying to vet some of that, and I think, um, leaning on Dave's expertise, too, when it comes to professional development and things that we're offering, and not wanting to be inconsistent with those offerings, but really, how do we help encourage the growth that we know ultimately benefits kids? Taking on new classes that are related to the curriculum benefits kids, because they're learning new skills. I think it was Jen Johnson had a really good example, she, some of the classes she took, uh, leading into, what, 20 years ago, she still uses, because it's important skills that she learned, um, and yes, it evolves over time, but you apply it in your classroom, and then if other people see it, then you also share it in a way that I think TSS, again, that was our biggest miss, was the lack of a focus on professional development and collaboration in TSS. So, we're really trying to make sure we're addressing that head-on with this initiative.
Kerry, did you have a comment?
Uh, yes, uh, with the survey that's going into staff, I'm guessing these will be all pretty open-ended questions?
Yes, that's why we've done it to date. I think at last survey, we actually developed it together at the meeting, and it was just, what was the question? What are your ideas? And it was, they, some wrote really long, and some wrote really short, but they were open-ended, and I think we want to do the same here, um, where I would send out a draft survey to the team of about 30 people, and then, uh, they would offer feedback, then we'd send it out. We want to time it around the building forums, so, um, they'll also have all the same information, and then we'll be able to get that back, because we, again, want to be very clear, and we've been using their ideas as they're coming in, too.
Thank you.
And then along the lines of communication, um, because I, when we saw the comments, was that in August when we got the last report, and prior to that, a lot of the staff comments, um, about their feelings about the prior, um, versions of our compensation system, um, a lot of discord with regard to, you know, responding to educator effectiveness and so forth, and I'm not hearing educator effectiveness, um, going away, because we're not going to be violating the statute, right? The statute requires us to have it.
And will still be a foundation of the system from the perspective of, you have to be effective across all six standards in order to advance. So, I think it'll still be a bedrock of the system, because it's a legally mandated system. Will that be an important communication piece? It sure will. And will we have to keep hitting people with that? Yes, because I think there is, because of the rollouts, just a tie to the two, um, that was never intended, but just kind of was a result of the timing. Um, and how the performance piece was the primary driver of way, the way in which you increase your salary. So, by still needing it to be a gatekeeper for growth, it's not, um, the only way in which you achieve growth, it's really, as we said from the beginning with TSS 1.0 and 2.0, effective across the board needed to be a good place to be, has proven not to be over the last seven years. Um, it hasn't, they have not caught, kept up with comparables. This, we believe, going back to a more comparable system, um, that is more akin to the Minnesota schools, as well as the surrounding schools and other, all the other districts that we look at for comparables, I think will position us to keep our staff in a way that TSS 1.0 and 2.0 did not.
Okay, and then when you say, I know you're going to, the next steps include developing numbers within the structure, without getting into specifics or details, but is the general consensus as far as, I guess, prioritizing those, you know, steps, lanes, and then performance bonuses, that the descending order of how this will go, is like, the biggest advancement in salary will come by just being around for another year, or is it, is there going to be a change in the, maybe the priorities? It just happens to be the order they were presented today.
Happened to be, I think, I don't think we've even had that level of conversation about, I think bonus would be the last of the priorities, right? That's more the, um, extra bit that's great to recognize staff, if we're able to accomplish that. But I think the steps and lanes are the different pathways. We haven't yet talked about how that would lay out and what we would prioritize, it's a really good question, but then if you look at one of the samples, we actually do have a phasing out of those steps, right? So, after like five years in, if you don't make progression, professional growth, you don't keep getting steps. So, it's really a way to push people towards the growth side of it, and we actually got that idea from a few districts in the area, which we kind of latched on to, because we're like, yeah, that's pretty good, let's make sure that we have, we think five years, you get off probation, give another couple of years, but then beyond that, we want to focus on the pathway, uh, the growth pathway, and not the progression pathway.
All right, Rob, do you have a question?
Yeah, and just curious, the not to exceed $500 bonus, is that, where did that come from? Is that the limit of what other districts are doing, or?
It was really, it was just kind of a placeholder for more, more than anything to say, okay, like, uh, um, we know we don't want it to mean too much or too little, but there's the budgetary constraints. Um, we don't have numbers tied to anything else right now, so our priority's not going to be on that. We want it to be an element, if the board wants it to be an element, because, um, our team also, our whole district does amazing things with results, and we want to celebrate that, and I thought it was, in my head, it's more of a opportunity for pause and reflection on what we're doing collectively that's really good, too.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, comments from board members, otherwise? Thank you, committee members, for your report, and I look forward to seeing you, I guess, in January.
Can I, are we comfortable then? Are we good to proceed on the basis of what we're working on? Because then we will get, come to you guys next with some plans.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, uh, looks like our speakers are here, so we got financial considerations of facility and operational levies with Baird.
So, welcome Brian Brewer back to the table. I think Brian was here, he was here last year, too, I think, Brian. We talked about this last fall, a little bit.
With the committee, Citizens Committee.
Yeah, and then Brian was here back in 2016 quite a bit, so, um, he has kind of presentation, so a couple of things that are going to happen tonight, um, in the work session, as we have, uh, Brian is going to talk the, kind of more on the financial side of things, um, what, what impact things are as far as impacted bill rates and tax collections and borrowing options and things like that, should the board choose to go that direction. And then Matt is here from Bray to talk about the actual different options and the budgets that have been put to the different options, and, and where we're at, and, and the direction we go from there. And so, it's designed to be kind of a dialogue, so, um, you know, although Brian's going to be presenting at any point, if you have questions, just go ahead and interrupt, and we'll work through them.
Thank you, Nick. Good to see everyone. Um, tonight, what I've pulled together is more of a framework for discussion, because I understand you're going to hear, I think it's what, 57 different options or something tonight? All right, so, so there's a lot of moving parts, right? There's, there's various solutions to, um, the facility, um, and, and that intertwines with the operational budget, which is, uh, what we'll talk about second, but for the framework of the scope of work for a capital referendum, I wanted to give a framework of where you are currently, post the 2016 referendum, what that means, you know, some of the assumptions that go into the plan, such that when you narrow, continue your work to narrow down the scope, you'll, you'll understand the moving parts as we, you know, refine the estimates for what it would look like during our repayment. So, that was my goal with, with this initial summary. Um, so, some of the key concepts that we'll talk about is, is debt capacity, so what is the legal limit for a school district to borrow, right? Some of the numbers you're talking about sound large in our, in our personal budgets, right? But relative to the size of the school district, it, it really isn't, the, you know, the size that you're talking is not, um, uh, very large from a capacity standpoint. Uh, property value, as, as you're all well aware, uh, the communities that the district serves, uh, continue to grow steadily and have, have, um, um, strong economic and demographic growth, um, characteristics, and that factors into the, the property value. Uh, we'll talk about your existing debt, um, long-term interest rates, where, you know, which have been changing, as you've seen in the financial press throughout the year, and then state aid reimbursement, how that factors in to the estimate of the, the local tax impact of a, of a potential referendum. So, the first, the first slide here is what is your debt capacity? For a K through 12 school district in Wisconsin, it's defined as 10% of the equalized property values, uh, that you receive from the Department of Revenue. So, for 2022, the district's equalized property value was $6 billion, 300 million for 2022. Now, I have another slide to talk about that growth. So, at 6.3 billion, your debt limit is 630 million. As you've been paying down principal related to the 2016 referendum, currently outstanding as of June of this year, you have about 73 million of that capacity that is currently utilized, which leaves 556 million, uh, available. So, I would recommend not using all of that remaining capacity, however, it just puts into perspective the, the range of options that you'll discuss is still a, a small fraction of the ability of the district to borrow.
Can you just, how does that compare to other districts? I mean, so we're just over 1%, I mean, what, there's what we're allowed, what's typical? I mean, are we, are we low, are we average, are we high?
That's a great question, I get that a lot, and it's really relative to each district's growth, you know, stage in your growth and development, right? There are many districts that we work with that are built out, right? Their, their campuses are the way their campuses are going to be, aside from some remodeling here, some adjustments there, you know, their, their larger facility needs are already built and implemented, um, so their growth, or their use of capacity is potentially lower. But many districts, um, you know, are either, have to replace that once in an 80-year project, which is, you know, it'll dovetail to the next slide, but your base is 6, 6 billion, that is among the, the highest totals in the, in the state, I'd say probably top 20-ish, um, you know, and that as a percent, you know, your, your 10% allows for a lot more. So, currently, um, you, this number, this percent utilization is on the low end, is the short answer to your question, but it, there are more factors to that, uh, but as, as a percent utilization of your capacity, you're, you would be more on the low end of, of the state. So, this next slide is an interesting one, given the, the board members that were here during the, the previous community discussions and discussions over growth and projected growth, uh, we, as you recall, we, we stayed very conservative in, in the estimate of future property value growth, even though you had seen years of 4 and 7 and 6% growth prior to the 2016, uh, referendum. At that time, the total value of the properties within the district were just over 3.8 billion. You are now 6.3 billion, so during that time period, you've grown 66% and added 2.5 billion to the, the property, equalized property value, fair market value. equalized property value, fair market value of the, of the properties that are within the school district boundaries. So that's significant. I mean, that would put, that 2.5 billion alone would put you in the top 50 probably statewide. So, it's a significant growth during that time period, which has positioned you to continue to come in under your mill rate estimates that we conservatively projected back during that 2016 referendum.
And so, Brian, going back to that, so you said we averaged basically 7.8% growth over the last six years, roughly according to the chart. When we were doing the projections for the community, can you remind me, we were, didn't we do 3% for two years and?
Yeah, 3% for three, then we lowered it to two, and then we said 1% thereafter, something in that ballpark. But it was not, we, I purposefully did not want us to go into that 6 and 7. There were others that disagreed with me at that time, and they were right. However, the reason I want us to be conservative with this part is we don't control it, right? This is going to ebb and flow. This year, it was a 17% growth year over year. I personally do not think that that's a repeatable number, and it's coming off of a year, you know, because statewide, it was 14%. So, all, the fair market value of all properties in all of Wisconsin grew on average 14%. Last year, it was 7, and that 7 was a high. So, I want us to be defensible and conservative with the estimates because other variables continue to change, and this is one that you, you don't control, right? So, interest rates were conservative on, on purpose because rates can change like they have this year. But to your point, we were very conservative, and thus the mill rate came, it never hit the estimate that we projected, and it's been well below it ever since.
And that's been a combination, not just of property value growth, but of actual new construction also in the district. And I think just this last year, we had about $150 million, somewhere around there, of new construction added value, because just increasing the value of the property might drop the mill rate, but then the amount of money we collect from that property is going to be roughly the same. But it's needing that new construction bringing on, that helps bring down everybody's share as that goes on there.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? So, what this visual, this is similar to that pie chart on the first slide, however, what I'm doing here is I'm taking your, your remaining principal balance of the 2016 referendum debt and overlaying it with your growth in your property values. So, when we first finalized the 2016, there was 314 million of capacity remaining at that time. Fast forward to projected 2023, there's currently, because you've been paying down principal all along, but your values have also been growing, so your capacity has grown, currently that, that available capacity is 556 million. And then, little by little, as you continue paying down the principal, which is what the darker shaded portion of the bar chart is, the capacity available continues to increase. So that's what this visual is, is showing you. So if you flip to the next page, so this is the amortization, so the principal and interest payments related to that, that 2016 authorization, relatively level payments with a planned step down in 2028. The 2023 year is the discussion that you, you've had in the past month about setting the debt levy to be able to pay down debt even more rapidly than originally planned, which will help to avoid interest costs and position the district for what is next.
So that spike shows the $5 million that we talked about at the annual meeting, adding that on to the debt service collection, still dropping our mill rate $110, which we'll talk about later in the meeting, but it shows trying to at least generate some revenue now while things are dropping so that we can prepay things down the road, as Brian said. So that's why there's a significant difference between 2023 versus any of the other years.
Correct, and I'll attempt to quantify some of that interest cost avoidance, that additional prepayment, having that as available in the Fund 39, fund balance, would afford, afford you in the future. So this, this chart is a 30-year snapshot of the trend in municipal interest rates, municipal bond interest rates. This is a 20-year rate, and for those of you that have been on the board for a number of years, you, I've, you've seen this, and we've worked our way down this from the, you know, 2007 and '08, you know, we've continued to set new, new lows at those, each of those points, and at those points, the board took advantage of refinancing what, what was already outstanding at higher interest rates and reduced the interest costs to be paid, paid down the debt quicker, and positioned the district for what was next. And the most recent what is next was the 2016 referendum. So, that continued into the last two years where we set abnormally low interest rates coming out of, you know, with the Federal Reserve's actions, trying to stabilize the economy during the pandemic time period. And then the far right, you see the relatively sharp and steep readjustments back to more normal interest rate levels, which we've been hearing about and talking about throughout the year. The thing I want to point out, though, is that even with that sharp increase in rates, if you look back across the 30 years, we're still in a range where it was, you know, right, right after or right around the Great Recession. So, even, even these borrowing levels are not historically very high. They're just high relative to what rates we've seen specifically in the last two years, but then maybe, maybe the last 12, 13 years post, post-recession. So, the takeaway here is we, our planning rates are higher because we're taking into account this readjustment to more normal levels. You have taken advantage of those low points as a board to refinance previous authorizations to reduce interest and pay off debt quicker, which has put you in a position, as we discussed on the previous pages, where you have some drops in your payments coming up, and you have significant capacity to address what, whatever the next facility solution is. So if we flip to the next page, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, the main thing I want you to focus on is the far right. So this is the DPI's State Equalization Aid worksheet, and so there's a lot of detail and data that go into it, but the key takeaway is the far right in the orange. There are three levels of aid reimbursement that arrive at your aid, your total aid for each year. Right now, the district's aided at about 37%, 38% of your total shared cost comes from the state. However, it comes in three different levels, and your, your primary aid is about 49%, your secondary aid is about 43%, and your tertiary aid is negative 28%. So when you see me running illustrations, you'll see me factoring that in there because that is a component of the total cost of new expenditures. So, it's, it's a lot of detail, but I want, it's a key, key assumption that we have to build into these plans, and I want, wanted to highlight that as we're setting the, the base for future discussions. Currently, as of 2223, the district receives about 24 million of state aid, you know, state equalization aid. There are other categorical aids that you receive, but this is the equalization aid. So, this page is summarizing the range that I had available to me last week. It may be different, but, but this was the low and a high is what I wanted to do here, just to give you a framework of some of the base assumptions that Nick Bonney and I spoke about. So on the low end, it was a project solution of about 36 million. On the high end, it was about 115, I think it was 114-ish, but I rounded to 115. So, the, the plan is that you've been able to set aside and build some reserves for future capital, and we're using a line item of about 15 million of those reserves to offset the amount you would need to borrow and, and ask for as part of a, a capital referendum. So we're applying 15 million to buy down that project amount, such that 36 million is, is only financing 21 million, and 115 million is only financing 100 million. Okay? The, the next line, it says reallocation of the 2223 Fund 39 levy. So, as Nick mentioned, you levied that additional amount to pay down debt in 2223. If you decide to proceed, and we get to the spring, when you're collecting that levy to, to choose what to pay down, what's most advantageous to pay down, if you choose to proceed and there's an April referendum, and, and that for a capital, and that is approved, one of the things we would do is evaluate, is that more beneficial to offset the new debt that would be approved in April, or is it better to offset the older debt that is already issued and outstanding at lower rates? These illustrations, because of where rates are, and because we're in the early stages of deciding, you know, how you would proceed, my assumption is you would use it to, you'd rethink post an approval in April, that it'd be better to not borrow 5 million long-term, you'd just use it to pay off a, like a construction loan, and never borrow it long-term. So you'd avoid the interest on that 5 million because you made the, the, you know, pre-planning decision in this budget cycle. So I, that's a mouthful, however, the, the value of doing the, applying the 15 million and then reallocating the 5 million, you're avoiding, on a $36 million project, you'd be avoiding 6.5 million of interest. On a, on a 115 million, you'd be avoiding about just shy of 15 million of interest by, by not needing to borrow long-term the 15 million and the 5 million. So I said a lot there, does that make, is it, are you tracking, am I explaining it okay, as to how those moving parts would work?
Yes. Probably more for Nick. If I remember right, in our budget, we talked about having 10 million. Where does the extra 5 come from?
We started the summer talking about an extra 5 because we finished so well to the good this, most recent year, we said we could do probably 15. So at a couple of different meetings this summer, we talked about that.
But 15's not there yet, it's just a, to be approved.
It's in fund balance, 10 is committed, and you just have to do and commit another 5, but I mean, there's 15 million there that you could commit to it and still be all right.
Excellent.
Okay, so with that as a, as a background to the detail, I'm going to run through one or two of these, but they, they all kind of follow the same format, and it's really intended, I don't want to get too lost in the, the detail of the numbers because again, these will be refined as you refine the scope of the projects, but I wanted to give you a framework of what we're, you know, how we're layering in the hypothetical new debt. So, on the low end of the, the borrowing amount, you'll have more choices. So 21 million, the far left column is the remaining payments related to the 2016 referendum authorization, okay? So that you, basically you have relatively level payments through 2036, so the next 13 In the middle, I have, Phase 1 is a $21 million ban, and then I'm using, in the gray shaded there, there's 5.39, 5,396,000 that I'm using to make a prepayment on that ban. So you're only borrowing in Phase 2, long-term, about 15.6 million, okay? So that's how we work our way across this page. So the long-term component of a hypothetical $21 million referendum, which effectively pays for $36 million worth of projects, would be a net borrowing of 15.6 million, okay? In this illustration, I'm paying that off in 10 years. You can pay it off up to 20 years, but, but for now, because those payments over, over, over the next 10 years, that middle column is the main one we'll talk about on this page, so it's combined Fund 39 debt, so what's outstanding now, plus what, what would be hypothetically layered in, in each of the scenarios. So your, your Fund 39 payment this year was 12.5 million, and all of the future payments are 8 million to maybe 9 million in the, in the blue shading, and then it drops down to 6 million and then zero thereafter. So you can fit that within what you've already levied with no new increase over the current budget, the current 2223 budget, and pay it off quickly.
So what you're saying, based on the extra money we're putting in debt service, the mill rate, for this year for debt service would be 204, according to this illustration, right?
Correct, yep.
But even if we borrowed 21 million, the new mill rate would actually drop to 128.
Correct.
And that goes up a little bit, and then it starts to work its way back down. So actually, even if we went to referendum, we would have a mill rate drop because it wouldn't take the full $5 million to pay it off every year.
Correct. Any other questions on that piece? Because, yeah, that, that will be what changes in each of these illustrations. The, the reason I have the yellow highlight on the first year of aid and the, that $1.50 is that, I'm taking this issue in isolation, so the aid on these expenditures, but you'll, at the same time, you'll have the rest of the operating budget, and so there'll be aid on that as well. So, I'm potentially double counting aid loss here, so I just, I put it here because it makes this in isolation accurate. However, I also know that the operational budget will, will continue to function each year as we layer this in, so that's why it's highlighted because it's, you know, it, you know.
Worst-case scenario.
It's a worst-case scenario, right, right, exactly.
It'd be like counting the negative tertiary aid twice.
Twice, correct.
And this is one of the challenges that we have when we don't, when we haven't picked an option that we're going to finance, there are so many moving variables, whether it be construction, whether it be finance, whatever it is, that it makes it very difficult to kind of put these things in here, and even as Brian said, at $21 million, you could choose to pay it off over seven years, 10 years, 20 years, 13 years, whatever it is, and that's going to potentially impact the mill rate. And actually, at the $5 million increase, you probably pay it off over five years.
Correct.
You know, if, if that's what the board chose to do, and then see, you know, you wouldn't see the drop in the first couple of years, but then you see a pretty dramatic drop after that. But I think those are the components that once the board chooses which direction they want to go, if they want to go to referendum, then we can say, okay, here are some different, here are some different options for that dollar amount. But right now, we have multiple dollar amounts, multiple years in which they could be paid off. It is, it is a moving target that is very difficult to kind of have it out, so what we had them do is basically take the very lowest one, 21 million, a midpoint of about 50 million, and then a high of, you know, 100 million, so that you guys kind of have the three different variations, so you can see what that looks like.
Ask a question? Yeah. So the projected 2027 refunding that you have noted here, how does that benefit us? I mean, are we anticipating higher interest but quicker term, or?
No, yeah, so, so it's a great question. You may recall that, that final portion of the 2016 authorization, we sold a 10-year note with a, a larger payment in the 2027 year, that the intent was either we levy and just pay it down, or we refinance and amortize it over another three to five years or something. So it's not necessarily for savings at this point, it's more for, you know, amortizing within the, the total, just kind of smoothing it out. As you'll see on some of these illustrations, as the payments get above, you know, this 8.9, we may not even need to do that, that, because the new payments, we can just structure around that higher payment in 2027. So, I noted here, because it's all part of the assumptions, but as Nick just said, once we narrow the scope of the, what, what solution you want to move forward with, we would refine, you know, do we even need to do that or not? So.
Sure, thank you.
So as Nick mentioned, we now move to two middle-of-the-road, so it's one amount, it was a $50 million net borrow net referendum. It was a 50 million dollar net borrow net referendum, but I did it for a purpose and it really was to show, you know, potentially two ends of a spectrum of how you could finance 50 million. So here, same concept on the left side is the existing payments. In the middle, phase one is that bond anticipation note where you apply the 5 million 396 and so you're you arrive at a net borrowing amount of 44 million six. Okay? In this illustration, my goal was use as much of the 20 years as I can use such that when I look at that column, the combined Fund 39 debt service, I want, I want to keep that as low as I can over the over the next 20 years. And so, you know, it's really the the blue highlighted, you're basically paying off the 50 or the 44 million six of principal after you're paying off the 2016, the remaining 2016 authorization. So even borrowing 50 million, you're you're dropping your, you potentially could drop the mill rate from the $2.04 down to $1.60, $1.50 and then on down to $1.20 thereafter. So this is an effort to create as much room within the mill rate and use the full time period to pay pay back the debt. Okay?
So in this option, this would be a project cost of about 65 million. This would be borrowing 50 million and applying 15 million in fund balance, just to give you a guess, kind of a, an idea of where we're at. So just like the first one was to borrow 21 million, but apply 15 million in fund balance, so it'd be a project cost of 36 million. So.
Correct. So Tim, if you flip to the next one, so this is the exact same scenario, 65 million worth of cost, apply 15 million to buy down to the 50 million of referendum, pay 5 million on the ban so that you're financing 44 six. This time I said, well, instead of using as much of the 20 years, let's let's push up the principal repayment and 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 arrive at a levy and a mill rate just under the the current. And so in this case, I ended up leveling out at a million or 11 million two as the payment and it's about a 13 year, 14 year repayment period instead of using the full 20 years. So trade off is you don't have as much of a mill rate drop, you still have a mill rate drop, but not as much of a mill rate drop. The benefit is you're paying the principal off quicker, so you're there, you're paying back less interest costs over the the repayment term.
It's about a 17 million dollar difference in interest cost on that. But I think, you know, we wanted to be able to show the board and again, be able to hone these down once we get to a final option, is that there's a lot of room within what how we've designed this so that the board can choose to delay and push some of these costs off to future, potentially the next generation of property taxpayers or they can pay it upfront, you know, in the next 10 years, 10, 12 years and get a reduction in in interest cost as you as you look at it. So there's a lot of room, but both of them, I think this is what's, you know, last time we did a debt issuing back in 2016, when we went to referendum, we told people 90 cents on the mill rate for 90 million dollars. We said, we need to raise the mill rate 90 cents in order to get the payment to make the 90 million dollars. What we'd essentially be telling people here is on a 50 million dollar issuance, we would actually reduce the mill rate, you'd, people actually see it go down. Now, that doesn't mean that if we didn't issue any debt, it would go down even more. I mean, that's, that's, that's truth because that's what a lot of people say, well, what if you didn't issue any debt, wouldn't it drop even more? Absolutely, it would drop even more. But by setting up, trying to keep our mill rate somewhat in play this year, it allows us to kind of drop it down steadily over time.
So Nick, with regards to the mill rate, you know, when our school district realizes 17% increase in value, realistically, no matter what we do, our mill rate's going to drop. Really, what we should be talking about is what are the dollar impacts, which is probably more challenging. Because really, we could be, you know, our mill rate could drop and our constituents could see significant increases in their property taxes.
Depending on what the property value did.
Yep.
Yeah, if the property value went up, yeah, there's no doubt about it. And that's where that new construction piece comes into play because the more new construction that pushes that number up, that helps drop everybody else's portion down. And so, yeah, I mean, until we get to a, okay, this is the direction we want to go, then we can start looking at, we start pulling real, real property tax bills and saying, okay, on average, the average house in our district went up, you know, 12% or 13%. And so what is that, you know, what does that mean when you adjust it, when you put the new mill rate to it? Yeah, there might be still, there would be still an increase, absolutely. I mean, it's, it's not, when we we talk about, the only thing we can control is the mill rate. I mean, as far as up and down, we cannot control whether or not their value of their house went up or down. Yeah, I mean, that's, there's no doubt about it.
So the next illustration that we put together was using, so this is, so the number in the upper left is the financing amount. So this is 100 million worth of project scope minus the 15 million of funds on hand gets you to an 85 million financing. All of the assumptions along the way are the same as what we've talked about. This one uses 70 or uses the 20 years and and if you notice in the middle column there, it it effectively fills us up to about that 12 million five level that's baked into this year's budget. So so that 100-ish million plus or minus is about the number where you keep it, you can still drop the mill rate a bit, but it's, it's getting close to, you know, you know, maintaining the current mill rate, let's, let's say it that way. So again, 100 million worth of project scope. So if you flip to the next page, this is the the highest end of the scenarios that that we saw on the on the range of possibility. So this is 115 million of project scope minus the 15 million, so the the referendum financing amount is 100 million, amortized over 20 years. We do have the ability to split this and finance it over two, two years, but for scope of tonight, I wanted as much apples and apples as I could get. So you're effectively right around that a payment of about 13 million. So it's about a half a million higher than the current 12 and a half million you have in the budget. So anywhere from that 100 million to 115 million, that's, we can structure it to be, right at that 12, 12 million five that you levied for in Fund 39 this year.
So going back to Rob's original question, Brian's basing everything on collection. So moving away from the mill rate, basically saying, okay, in this scenario, we need roughly 12 to 13 million dollars to repay it every year to make our payments, our mortgage payments. So as more stuff comes online, as more new construction comes online, this portion of people's property tax bill should go down as new construction comes online. Now, if everybody's value just goes up and there's no new construction, then it's really not going to change. It's just, everybody's going to pay the same portion. But if, you know, if we consistently have 150 million dollars a year worth of new actual property online in Hudson, you will see the impact of this number will continue to go down for people. There'll be real dollars that will actually go down on their taxes because it'll be spread over a larger group of taxpayers.
Do you have a sense, Nick, and probably unfair question, but of what that run rate has been over the last couple of years, three years on new construction adds by year?
Like as a percentage of our increased in value?
50 million versus a 6.3 billion, I mean, do you have?
No, but we can get that number. I mean, we, every year in the annual meeting, we put that number in the annual meeting so we can just go back and look at like the last three or four annual meeting books and and give you a calculation. I mean, I would say it's been close to the 100 million mark at least every year since I've been here and we haven't had these kind of increases. But yeah, I mean, we can, we can absolutely pull that number. But I think, you know, the the big highlight of any of these things is just, it's almost impossible to dial in exactly what the numbers are until we get a solution that we're, until we say, it's going to be, you know, 16 million or it's going to be 68 million, whatever it is, then Brian will be able to say, here's three different ways to do that 16 million and this is going to be the most advantageous for your district or this is going to save the most interest or those things. But we really can't do that on this many options because inevitably, it's confusing now, it's going to get more confusing and the people sitting around this table have more time into this than the average person. So that's why it'll be extremely important for us to kind of continue to narrow things down so we can give you better numbers as we continue to narrow down.
So with this illustration that's up up right now, even the most expensive option that's under contemplation now would result in a tentative mill rate increase of about 27 cents from 204 to 231.
Yeah, and again, that's that one year, which I might be double counting aid. So so conservatively speaking, yes, you're reading it correctly, however, it's it's potentially mill rate wise about 5 cents, that 2009 or just flat.
And the and the other numbers?
Yeah, so, right, I could also, which you you've done in the past where you borrow what you need for the first year and then you borrow a second year, which would get us another payment year of 2044. So that would also, yeah. So I mean, we can, to Nick's point, if you get to that, if one of these options is in this ballpark, we can refine this to get you a better working number. In my, in my mind, what I want you to leave tonight, it's, it's about flat is what I would, you know, all the way up to your highest end of your scenarios, we could structure it in a way that it's, you know, about flat with what your current payments are in the 2223.
One of your first slides was the current debt level or as of June of 2022 was?
73.
73 million. And on this, each of these illustrations, you've got the existing Fund 39 debt service going out through 2036, it's about 93 million in payments. So we're, we'd be paying 93 million to pay off the 73 million in principal roughly, correct?
Of of the previous debt, you're saying?
Yes, previous, yeah. And and that's just a function of the low interest rates that we were able to buy all of those bonds at.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, we wouldn't look at refinancing probably anything that we already have issued. We had a really, really good rate.
Yeah.
But even if you look, if you go back and look at the the slide on rates, right now, although yes, they're much higher than where we were borrowing in 2016, they still are sitting around 3.5% to 5% somewhere in there for municipal bonds.
Today?
Yeah.
No, 4.5% to 5%.
4.5% to 5%.
Correct. So everything I've run here uses 5.5%. So full percent higher than today, primarily because the Federal Reserve is likely to raise it next month and again, once more before the end of the year, based on what they're saying and signaling. So I wanted to be higher and then we come in better to the extent we can.
But just to give you an idea, and I think Matt will probably touch on it here in a little bit, the rate of inflation on construction right now is three times that. So continuing to wait, although nobody likes to pay interest, it, the exact same thing start costing dramatically more money if we continue to push this down the road.
And then your last slide says summary of debt capacity.
Yeah, so this is the 115 million, which finances 100 million. So that's with the purple portion of the stack bar. So going back to that chart I showed you, page three or so, this is what would the capacity look like in 2024 if you issued that full, what would be net 90, 94 million? You'd still have 485 million worth of capacity even after the the high end of the scope range. So circling back to my very beginning slide, you have plenty of capacity to to take on what the solution is, it's just a matter of figuring out what is, what is the right solution for the future.
Okay, any further questions for Brian? Will you, will you still be here when Matt's talking?
I'll be here through the, through the rest of the discussion. Are we going to Matt next and then coming back?
Okay. Great.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Good evening.
So I believe all of you have in board packet or in front of you, hopefully, the large 11 by 17 printouts. That probably is the main area focus and likely what will be shared with the community on November 1st. So that is a reminder that we're working towards next week Tuesday, when we will be inviting the community in for a conversation on these. As as a little bit of background, we are maybe 12 options less than the high school, so thank you for that, even though we still have a lot of options in play to explore. The budget documents that were shared, there again, that was another lengthy document for you to review. None of the budgets right now assume any divestiture of any assets. So if we do decide to close an elementary school or two, any value you would recoup as a district by selling those properties is not assumed in here and any divestiture of, for example, this building or additional property owned on UU or elsewhere, those would be dollars that you could decide what to do with. I will say the community will ask. So as we get started with this and get a little more refined, I think we will be having the board at least give us some direction on how to message that. Is it, we're going to pay off debt, is it, we're going to put it in a deferred maintenance fund, we're going to do something else with it? But I, so that's just some context here is these are not assuming any revenue from sale of any of your properties, even if we do close some. The other thing I would add is, as Nick noted, inflation is a huge part of of any conversation today. We have built these budgets based on an assumption of about 15% inflation in calendar year 2022. We've heard anywhere from 12% to 18%. I don't know that anybody can really tell you, it it does vary. So that is built into the base number. And then if you, if you looked at the detail, we've added 5% for 2023 and then 2.5% for the first six months of 2024. That is something we will want the board to agree on. That's a complete risk tolerance conversation. How how much do we want to inflate our costs to protect against inflationary risk versus how much do we want to build that inflationary risk in and maybe be asking for more than we need? That's not a decision I think that any one of us should make alone, it's just, like I said, a risk tolerance decision that we'll, we'll make and go with. So those are just some background for the projects. I will defer, Jamie, do you want, do you want to go option by option? Do you guys want to, if you've spent some time on it, if you have questions, I'm happy to do whatever is is your preference.
And and a couple of notes real quick. So originally, the original documents that I believe you guys got on Wednesday or Thursday, on some of the priority one and two items, the numbers were a little bit lower and after we had Dustin go through with the insurance claims, because what Matt had done prior to the first set that I sent to you is taken out basically almost all roofing replacements because of the hailstorm. Well, then what we did is we had Dustin go through, compared the 10 year maintenance plan to the actual replaced roofs in the, in the hailstorm and put back in roofs that aren't getting replaced by insurance because they weren't damaged. And so it's actually shockingly, a lot of roofs that we wish would have been replaced aren't and we lost some new roofs and we lost some air handlers that were brand new. So of the 20 some million dollars worth of insurance claims, well under half, not even probably, maybe a quarter of that is actually offsetting things in the maintenance, in the 10 year maintenance plan.
Yeah, so so many of those roofs were in your 10 year or beyond projection likely for replacement versus in this first 10 years, so we would have seen more savings if that was the case. So that's a good clarification, Nick, thank you.
Yep. So if you're saying, wow, some of these numbers look slightly different than what I reviewed on Wednesday or Thursday, that's the, that's the caveat on that. And I think, you know, so the options are essentially, and and I guess, you know, Matt can talk to any one of these, but it's the same type of things that you saw before, except now there's dollars to each one of the projects put on, on the options. The other thing that you'll see on here is there's the middle school dollars. We've talked primarily about the elementaries because that has the biggest impact on changing people's lives as far as closing buildings and things like that. But the middle school has maintenance needs and so every one of these options has almost 15 million dollars worth of maintenance on the middle school that needs to be done. So just something to keep in mind as you go through these things. You know, we've looked at other options, you know, before where the middle school was broken out separate from elementaries. This is kind of all together, this is, this is the cost associated with.
was wanting to know what the current status was. And I know that's not reflected here. Is there another document that provides a same same? So if parents are looking at this and wondering how much of a change is this from what we actually currently have, is where would that information be available? Would that be the classroom size, that document that we've looked at this year that, that shows classroom, number of classrooms per building and enrollment?
Option, option one is exactly what we have.
Six buildings.
Six, it's got six buildings with the number of classrooms that are existing in those buildings.
Okay, but I don't, unless I'm misreading it, I don't see the number that shows the current enrollment, like the number of kids actually in these buildings right now. Is that correct or am I missing it?
You're talking about the actual students in each of these buildings?
Correct. I think parents were wondering how much of a change is this, each of these from what we currently have? Help me understand what we currently have it, because this is kind of the, like, if things
Looking for a baseline?
If things were spread evenly with our current configuration, here's what it's look like and I think, would it look like? And I think what we heard from some parents was, well, what does it look like right now?
Like how many kids are in each of our buildings right now?
So just the current 2022, 23 enrollment broken down by building by grade level.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have that document, that's a document we've shared every two weeks for like July through August.
I think if it can't be incorporated here, then it would be nice to have it at least shared and, and available for reference because I, again, I think from several parents, we were, they were wondering that. Because parents know their, their kids' building, they don't, they don't know the rest of the buildings.
Yeah, and I think what people are going to see, and I generally think is that we're actually, we're well overestimating, I think, our needed capacity based on today and projected enrollments. And that's intentionally conservative, that's one of those dials, excuse me, that we can control once we narrow the set of options down. If the board wants to be a little more conservative with how much capacity you build based on enrollment today and projections, we can dial a few of these projects back potentially.
And so, yeah, I mean, we can just, as for the information that we give people on Tuesday next week, we can give the most recent class size, broken down by grade, broken down by building, so that everybody can see that. There's really not a good place to put it on each one of these sheets because depending on rebound drain, on the different options, they're gonna, they're gonna change.
Maybe on the, on the first sheet, could you just add an extra column?
In the notes column?
No, just maximum capacity, enrollment target, current enrollment.
Oh, if this is the, if we assume this is the let's keep what we have, then that, those, those numbers would slide in well to this one.
But as Nick said, keep what we have building wise, but as far as, you know, capacity will change or student pupil per classroom will change as we make adjustments.
So have it only on this one to, to reference back?
Well, I'm just saying it's hard, it's hard to, if they're looking for, I want to see what this is going to do to my school. I mean, we've had the discussion about low class sizes and Holton being addressed has to be addressed for efficiency and fairness. So I don't know.
I just think a separate sheet would probably make more sense because otherwise you're going to have a piece of data on option 1A that you're not going to have on any other option. And people are going to go, well, you told me how many kids are in North Hudson on 1A. Tell me how many kids are in North Hudson on 2C. And we say, well, we really, I mean, we can tell you what the, what our target would be, but until you reboundary the district, we can't give you an exact number of what that, but we can absolutely have that document ready to go as far as here's the six buildings currently, and this is how many kids are in each of the six buildings.
Yeah, I think that's a good request too, as a simple separate document at each table. I think that's very easy to do.
So are we putting it out there that if we stay the way we are, there still will be a reboundary probably, or?
There would or would not, is that what you said?
Yeah, I mean, because
That, I guess that would be, so, I mean, that's the other option as we go through this is you could, you could reboundary and still keep six buildings open and not have them be very full. So reboundary so that certain buildings are fuller than others and that you actually have empty classrooms sitting in certain buildings versus empty seats in certain classrooms. You understand what I'm saying?
Both option 1A and 1B do not change capacity, do not increase capacity, you could or could not, you would be able to, but you wouldn't need to reboundary based on current enrollments. So those are all added layers of, of 1 and 1A, or 1A and 1B, sorry, I will do that a lot as we go through this. Just so you realize, that is the situation with six buildings is you have excess capacity in both and how you use that capacity would be a board, I think, decision regarding boundaries.
So you could reboundary to cut down the utilization rate in certain buildings much, much less, so you could reduce number of sections if that's something you chose to do. Or you could just choose to change class sizes.
Well, I guess to get to your question, Matt, maybe if we could just address option 1A and then there's an estimated operating referendum that says, that says 8 million and that doesn't seem to change if we go down to four buildings. And so I'm confused, I thought the operating referendum, needed operating capital would go down if we consolidated.
It does. And option two, it goes down to 5 million.
That is the variable that is, is going to be, I think, the most difficult for our community to understand the moving parts and pieces of is, you know, why does a capital referendum not increase taxes potentially? Now, unless we shared the wrong ones. So if, if the documents I sent were shared, then they would not be correct. The ones on the board docs are.
Okay. So the, the one we have electronically then do show it going down to 5 million. All right.
So option 2A shows an estimated savings of, let's say, 2.9, 2.8, 88 million associated with the closure of two buildings.
Okay. So the ones that we got paper of, which was, must have been earlier, that was just a error.
This was, I, I didn't do the operating pieces, Nick and team put those in, so.
Got it.
You don't want me doing the operating piece either?
Yeah, no, that's, and that's, that's my fault. I mean, because the ones on the actual public agenda that are tied to the public agenda, they show $5 million estimated operating referendum in options two through, two through five.
So what's on the board packet better reflects what we plan to share with the community on the first, is that fair?
Correct. What's in the, what's online in the board packet would be the most up-to-date numbers.
So Nick, with the operating levy, are, are you thinking reoccurring and with some kind of inflation factor or is this three-year, five-year?
Well, you can't, you know, I asked Brian that, I said, hey, could we just tie it to a percentage and have it be like 5% and every year it's 5% of our Fund 10? But no, really what it is is, and we're going to get into this discussion as well, is the $5 million is kind of that point where we're going to have some surplus for a couple of years and some deficits for a few years after that. So almost like that $5 million takes, would last about eight to nine years based on projections.
But you are thinking reoccurring?
It would be reoccurring.
Nick, can you clarify the 8 million would do that or the 5 million?
Both of them, both of them would do that. The big difference between eight and five is a $3 million worth of savings related to staffing. So if you don't get the $3 million related to staffing and you decide to keep six elementaries open, you're going to have to go for a larger operating referendum, which would be about 8 million. And I think we're going to be talking operating referendum a little bit after we get to the...
So we want to focus on the capital.
Yeah. So right now, just focus on, really want to focus on just the capital cost, the capital budgets, the options related to construction stuff, and then we'll talk about the operational side of the house so we don't get people confused.
But the goal is to continue to help the community understand the, that they're interwoven, right? That there, in theory, is potentially two referendums that need to be considered, a capital and an operating, and the operating amount is directly impacted by the capital, meaning how much savings can we achieve through a capital referendum directly impacts the operating? And based on what we just saw, hypothetically, mill rate isn't impacted by these options from the capital side, but there will, I believe, always be an impact for an operating. Is that fair?
Yes.
So that's, I think, where, that's the layer of information that has been missing for the community in our early dialogues, I shouldn't say community parents, sorry, in those parent meetings, that was missing. Because to them, and I, I get it, it just seems like we'll keep the buildings open and go to a larger operating referendum. Why wouldn't you do that? I think we're going to start to be able to share the specifics as to why that has a bigger impact on taxpayers potentially than some of our options two through five.
Okay, so rather than risk, you know, going off the paper copies that we were given, going off what we have in the board doc that's in our electronic agenda and tied to the public agenda. So if you could just describe the difference between 1A, 1B.
So 1A and 1B, 1A, and the other thing we did, and this was good feedback from the Holton parent group, was they wanted to kind of connect these to the community facility task force options, just because to them that was a good connection point. So that's added here as well when it makes sense. So what, the difference between 1A and 1B is 1A is basically just doing all priority one and priority two capital maintenance items as identified in the WALD report. Doesn't add a square foot of space, doesn't change any of the building configurations. So that's kind of our base, I'd argue kind of our do nothing option, which is to, to address our capital maintenance needs at six elementaries plus the middle school. 1B got into a little bit more of an educational improvement plan where they were creating collaboration spaces that was, they were losing some classrooms in that case, and so a few classrooms were being added back. So it's kind of a, a capacity replacement addition, not necessarily a capacity increase, which is why you see the, the capacity numbers or classroom quantities being basically the same from 1A to 1B.
And these numbers that you have for 1B, which is the incorporating the upgrades for equitable educational experiences across the schools, that range of 90?
99 to 110 roughly.
Right, 99 to 109 is quite a bit higher than what WALD had, and that's where we get into this 15% inflation.
Yeah, and I will say that there isn't good specificity in the WALD numbers on what they assume for construction schedule, duration, inflation. I could be double counting, to be frank, the inflation on the WALD numbers. If I knew that they already had inflation built in or had the detail, I could be a little more accurate there. So these are conservative, I think, I hope. But it still does fall under, you know, the, the kind of target max threshold as well.
Nick, you could just call WALD and ask them, right?
Yeah, it's been...
They still love you, don't worry.
Yeah.
And I'm not using that as an excuse. When there isn't 30 different budget line items we're creating, we're going to have to go back and recreate all these anyway. And I'm optimistic and I'm hopeful at least that when we do, we might find some savings there versus seeing things go up in price.
Well, and I think the, the other piece is, is, you know, when we originally did these budgets with WALD back in 2021, this is before inflation started really going through the roof. So, you know, yes, they would have had inflation built into their budgets because obviously you don't, you know, you don't pass referendum and start building that next day. However, I don't think anybody was projecting the type of inflation that we've seen over the last year when that was done. So although there may be some room in these budgets, I would, I would guess that, you know, when you talk about if an elementary school costs, you know, 35 million a year ago and you had 20% inflation of that, that same building is now 42 million. And you haven't gotten anything more than you would have gotten the year before, but you've paid $7 million more. So I think that's the, that is the piece that people just have to understand is continuing to push this down the road, things are only going to get more expensive.
So the Kraus-Anderson numbers from, what was it, 2017?
2017, the Kraus-Anderson budgets, yep.
If they helped quantify some of these?
They went through those, the priority one, priority two that they had, updated them?
There's some overlap between the Kraus report and the WALD report. Trying to exactly identify where those all are, haven't gone there yet, but obviously as we land this plane, we will and we'll have detailed budgets for each one versus a range.
Sure.
The biggest difference is, I mean, we, we, we have to get the number of options down if you want better data. I think that's the bottom line on both the financing side and on the construction side. We have to get the number of options down. And when I say down, I don't mean like from 17 to 14, I mean from like 17 to two or three maybe at the very most, preferably one. But that's, we, we have to start, we have to start getting those things down or we won't. Because what's going to happen is we're, we're tied to whatever numbers we put out. Those are kind of our high water marks. Because we don't want to come out and say, you know, in three months from now, this option is actually 127 million, to say, well, what the heck? Back in October, you said it was 109 million. You know, so, but we also, you know, you don't want to inflate the numbers because you're trying to hedge your bets so much that people start to go, come on, this is getting ridiculous. So we just, we have to, we have to get the number of options down. And I think the other thing is, as you go through these different options, as Matt said, 1A and 1B, the difference is between the, do the minimum amount of maintenance and bring everything up to an educational adequacy, you know, adequacy that would be like Prairie and, and Rivercrest essentially. You know, they would have flex spaces and different things like that.
That's 1B, correct.
Yeah, you know, and then you get into option two, there's five different variations in option two, I think, 2A through 2E.
Yep. So, and 2A is basically closing Holton and Willow River, just doing capital maintenance. I will say this option, while it may look appealing from a budget perspective, would be very difficult for you to manage capacity, I think, on.
This option would put us in elementary rebounding almost yearly.
Pretty consistently.
Because this would put our, this would put our capacity at 2,200. So we'd be running at about 98% capacity unless we had a big drop in students. So just doing, just closing two elementaries and not giving any type of additional classroom capacity, we would end up just being in a constant rebounding in order to...
Which is similar to option five, right?
Option five, we, option five, we'd actually have more wiggle room if we kept four elementaries open and sent the fifth grade up because you'd take 300 and some kids out of those four elementaries.
Right, but I'm just looking at your capacity and again, unless this is wrong, on option five, it says max capacity 2,236.
Yeah, but you got to remember, there's going to be few, there's going to be fewer elementary kids because the fifth graders are going to be up in the middle school.
Okay.
So instead of having, let's say, 2150 elementary kids or 2100 elementary kids, you're actually only going to have 1,800 elementary kids because fifth grade is no longer in the elementary building. So capacity stays the same, but you have more, you have more wiggle room there.
Okay, then just a suggestion, because I know I jumped ahead to option five, but then what I would do with that capacity enrollment classroom totals is I would take out fifth grade being lopped in with third and I would say K to two, three to four, fifth to seventh, and eighth to 12th.
Good catch, Jamie. Yes, I think that's wrong in this, thank you.
Is that not in there?
Yeah.
No, I have it as the other grade configurations, I think, from before. So that's a good catch. I can't believe I missed something in this many options.
Okay. Three, four.
I think this is a high school.
No, you're right, Jamie, good catch.
Okay. All right. So, and I guess we could talk in great detail on these five options under two, right? Is there five?
Yeah.
Just option two?
High-level overview.
Sub-level, but what I want to get is some discussion from board members looking at options three and four, which are substantial changes from the way that we would do it. Option two is simply same grade configurations, just fewer buildings. And then the difference in cost is going new and elaborate upgrades versus basic, which is 2A. What I'm, what I'm wondering is, and I, because I haven't heard it with the public that has come to me or that I've seen at any of the parent meetings, and that is people jumping for joy at the prospect of making Hudson Prairie just a fifth grade school and having three K4 buildings. I just don't know, which is option three in all its variations.
Yes.
Okay, is, is there board members that want to spend a lot of time? Because again, the fewer the options, then the, I think, the less confusion that we'll have and the better able we will be to be able to product, predict costs and talk about these with the community on November 1st. So is there a strong desire, somebody thinking that this is going to be the option they champion, which is having kindergarten through fourth in our, most of our elementaries or three of our elementaries and one entire school made up of fifth graders at Hudson Prairie?
Jamie, I would agree that I have heard no one respond kind of, ooh, that's a good idea, that the responses that I have heard have not been favorable to that.
Okay. Anybody else?
I would agree from the people at the meetings that were like, well, that's interesting in top, but the more you take a few minutes to talk about it, what the busing impact, time of school start and release and a lot of other factors come into it, transitions. So I wouldn't say that there was anybody that I talked to that was... I wouldn't say that there was anybody that I talked to that was very interested in that.
Anybody have a lot of heartburn if we were to just take that off the table as far as discussion, so we can, for almost no other reason other than just to reduce the number of pages so that we're not spending substantial amounts of valuable time talking about options we're never going to improve and put on a referendum? Anybody? Do I have to do like the public hearing, going once, going twice, going three times, hearing none, then I think we just take option three. Now, same discussion, only with option four. Now, here I heard at least some discussion that there are pros and cons to this option, and that this option, again, being the fact that we would have two buildings that would be K through two, and two buildings of three through five, which, you know, one of the parents, at least one of the parent meetings, I heard, well, why would we create another level of transition, and wouldn't that be harmful to our kids and so forth? It's not that we're trying to consider an option that might be harmful. This is just another option that other districts find successful. It requires, again, a lot more busing from the standpoint of kids got to go somewhere, just that they'll not be going to maybe the same school, and they won't be going to the same school. They will at second grade to third grade. But, you know, it's less rebounding, because essentially you only need two boundaries. And so it would be far less rebounding going on. But, again, same question, do we want this option to advance to a community-wide meeting that's attended by 500 people? I'm being hopeful here that we're going to get 500 people next week.
I thought we'd have a few more tonight, to be honest with you.
Yeah, right.
So maybe to save me the flipping back and forth, the, the option for, the options parallel option two, correct? So in both cases, we're talking about four buildings. It's just a matter of, do we have four K5 buildings, or do we have two K2 and two through five? Is the financial impact significantly different, or is it pretty much a wash, and so we're really talking about which learning environment do we like better for our kids?
Yeah, I think your, the financial impact is, is going to be negligible. I mean, there's not a huge additional savings doing that. Now, the one thing you do get is you get fewer attendance boundaries. You essentially end up with a district that has two attendance boundaries and wouldn't likely, probably don't have to change them into perpetuity other than maybe a little tweak here or there, because you're splitting basically the district in half. You know, so the fewer, the fewer the attendance boundaries, the less likely you have to change them more, you know, more often. And so that's some benefit of that.
I guess the other one would be the more classes of the same grade level you have in one building, the more likely you are to lower the average class size, because every new student that comes in that grade level, you have the option to spread it across more classrooms. And arguably, if you have a low class size or a low total number of kindergarten students, for example, in one year, you may be able to relocate a staff member or save some sections more easily than with four attendance areas.
I think the biggest concern that I heard at the parent meetings was, and it was parents and teachers talking about the benefits of having K5 in a building, that those older students really do add value and create community for the younger kids. I mean, that came up, and then, yes, we have less walkers than one might think, but it would be bigger distances for more kids, whether your kid is driving a bus, or whether you are, you are driving your kid to school. I mean, bigger distances for more kids. So I mean, my, my, if we were forced right now to start to say we have to narrow things down, I would look at that and kind of go, why? But when we have a passion around, hey, let's keep K5, let's try and keep schools as close to our homes as we can, that one to me would seem odd. I think the, what I heard from parents, the interest part was more like, oh, I'd never thought of that. Oh, other schools do that? Oh, that's interesting. But I didn't hear a lot of excitement about it, whereas I did hear some real concerns about the disadvantages to that. I'm trying to remember the summary of things that folks jotted down at those meetings. Were there positives jotted down by attendees regarding moving to that model?
I think there were positives and negatives on each of the models. Some of them obviously had more than others. But I think, yeah, I mean, I think that's the, you can see all of those things online, because we have them all posted online. Tracy's got them all posted. So, yeah, I mean, if you eliminate this model and you eliminate number three, just so people know, we're basically back to where we were a year ago, which was all six or four. And potentially option five, which is the, you know, push grades up. And I think that's, you know, the, the big question that we would have to have from the board is, if through the parent meetings and the feedback that you're seeing online, you don't see people saying, we would invest money in order to get to option five. We would do option five if we didn't have a choice, because we couldn't pass a referendum. Well, then we start taking, you know, we start taking some of those things off the list. But I just want to make sure that we're clear as we go into November 1st, then the messaging is going to have to be, based on the feedback you heard from parents and parent meetings, you've said, we're taking some of these options. When I even start, when I consider them with the community. That's what I'm hearing you say.
Okay. Rob?
Mr. President. And so the, my takeaway from the parent meetings, the two that I participated in, and I talked with a couple of my fellow board members, you know, as it relates to the other two, you know, most of the parents that were sitting there were more in shock that they're even having a conversation about closing one of their neighborhood schools potentially. And so their minds at that point were not open to a conversation on anything other than, how do I save my school? Right, wrong, or indifferent. On the first, when we visit with the community, the community's going to want to have a conversation around, what are the pros and cons of each of these? Because this will be their first exposure. And I think we as a board are probably struggling a little bit with, you know, this is maybe our second exposure to this, and we're trying to work through mentally for ourselves, what are the pros and cons of each of these? And we really don't know. The pause, when Jamie, rightfully so, asked about excluding option three, the pause we all had was, we don't know. And we maybe talked to a handful of parents, but at the end of the day, we haven't really engaged our public in much of any of this, any of this. And so for us to exclude options versus humbly, better preparing for the first as far as what the pros and cons are, so that we're efficient in the conversation, I think that makes more sense. You know, for us to arbitrarily, and not arbitrarily, but, you know, basically just what our guts tell us, what to include and what not, I think is going to hurt us as we continue to ask the public for support. There's a lot of stuff going on here, a lot of moving parts, a lot of dollars. But at the end of the day, you know, our parents, they're going to say, what's in it for me? People who have no parents, or no parent, people who are not parents, people who don't work for the district, you know, to Nick's point, from a involvement with the district, their only real involvement is when they get their tax statement. And so what's in it for them? There's a lot of, there's a lot of work here, but I don't think it's for the board at this point to be narrowing options per se, just how do we better prepare for the first?
I think that his better preparation is to try and, you know, focus rather than confuse and expand. And you're right that maybe the community, this will be their first opportunity for face-to-face conversation about it. But as Nick's going to point out, this has been discussed, you know, facility plan, we had task force. Option four was not explored at the community task force, I grant you that. But what I'm just, is your comment intended that you don't want to take any options off the table, including option three, which right now has no support from any board member and had no support from any of the parent groups? Why would we have our community, you know, spend time in their, in that two and a half whatever hour meeting that's going to be on the first, talking about five options that none of us are going to adopt?
Well, I, I think those are fair points. You know, I guess what I would, you know, suggest is, going back to your point about the parent groups, those parent meetings, their passion was around, oh, my gosh, you're talking legitimately about closing my neighborhood school. There wasn't a whole lot of listening around any of these other options. You know, as a board, you know, I'll go back to, this is probably our second real, as a group, review of these, and we're all struggling with, what are the pros and what are the cons? I would suggest a pro perhaps with option C, is that with fifth grade going to Prairie, perhaps that whole bigger building, you know, becomes a bit of a middle school. Again, I don't know. But to have a fifth grade house, like we have the freshman house at the high school, and then have the additional space still for sixth, seventh, and eighth, maybe that's a plus. And again, getting back to, how do we help our public prepare for this conversation? If there were pros for each, you know, shortlist, and a shortlist of cons from our perspective, and then we give them to those groups so that when they have the conversation, they have at least a starting point, I think that's helpful.
I just think we got to be careful, because when we put pros and cons out, people think we're putting our finger on the scale and saying, okay, see, it's, it's already a predetermined outcome. But...
But we have to give them something. If we simply give them these options and say have a conversation, it's going to be like us. And that, that will only hurt us.
Well, you're on the danger of having, we have to show that we did our homework, that we looked at options, that we listened, and we presented. I understand, you know, if you, if you leave it on, if you leave these options on, but you give, you know, highlighted reasons why the board does not, or has not supported these. I know you were talking about putting your thumb on the scale. I don't know. I mean, I want, I want the, the people that haven't paid attention to see what we've been doing and different things we've looked at and discussed, but also understand why, you know, why we're not supporting it, because we have our reasons, and, and, and they're, they're well reasoned. I mean, they're, I mean, they're well thought out. It's not, I worry about time delay. I worry about this having too many options presented in a way like, we're still, we still are looking. I mean, the numbers are what the numbers are. There are reasons why we are talking about dismissing some of these. I think that, I think that is a reasonable approach.
Yeah, and I wonder if, I wonder if we charge the community on the first with helping us build the pros and cons, because that, in a way, would be a better reflection, I think, of the broader community sentiment. And I would argue that in a two and a half hour meeting, that's more time than 90% of your community is going to spend to get up to speed on this anyway. I, this is a rhetorical question. I'd be curious if closing two school buildings is a pro or a con, if we as a group were creating it. I don't know that I can put it in a column, because everybody's going to have a different perspective on that. So that's where I always struggle with the pros and cons, or advantages, disadvantages, however you look at it. It's really hard, because there's a lot of subjectivity that goes into some of them. I would be very open to having that be the deliverable back from the community, is a nice chart of advantages, disadvantages, pros, cons, whatever you want to call them, remaining questions for each of these. I think that could be interesting and helpful.
Well, and then I wonder, and have we gone too far into the detail? Because what I'm almost hearing, the pro and con conversation with parents had very little to do with money. It was about these different models, these different approaches to caring for our kids, right? And so when you say is closing two buildings a pro or a con? Well, from a model standpoint, or from a financial, I mean, I mean, you can ask different questions, and you might get different answers. And so, I mean, I think maybe, maybe what I'm hearing you say, Robin, maybe Bob, we could do it, you know, I mean, I agree, I would, if we decide not to, if we decide to say we're not actually going to move ahead with this option, it would be nice to not just have it not there, but to have it there as a, we looked at this, and here's why we as a board decided we're not going to spend time and resources fleshing out five different versions of this option, but at least for folks to be able to see it was considered, it was discussed with parents, and here's why we're not, we're not moving ahead. But I do think the challenge is, yes, we want the community as a whole to get their arms around these different approaches, the high-level options, and we need them pretty darn quickly to also wrap their minds around the financials that relate to the different A, B, C, D under the approaches. And it almost feels like two different conversations.
Anyone else want to weigh in? I mean, I guess I, I would prefer us to continue to move in a direction that, where we're going to benefit from community input. And so that's why on maybe option four, we do benefit, because it is something that the task force didn't consider. But, you know, getting some community input in it may be worthwhile. I just didn't see, you know, because like Heather said, there were some people who found it, you know, interesting, but I didn't hear anybody saying, oh, that's interesting, putting all the fifth graders at Hudson Prairie and going to K4. So...
Is there a way to facilitate a meeting like this? Because we've got a good chunk of time, in a way that the beginning of it is spent doing some big picture thing, and there's almost then some sort of a star voting, that the group that's present decides then, okay, given what we've just talked about, then here are the two options that we want to actually dig into and look at numbers? I mean, is there a way to facilitate it that way, so that we're digging in based on that group's leanings, as opposed to us making that decision?
I could see it being, I would envision this meeting being relatively parent-heavy, and I would imagine that that would not give us a good reflection if we just use that as the strategy. Because we may end up with 1A and 1B as their two favorites, because it doesn't close any school buildings.
Right, right. I would, I would say, if you have no desire to move forward with any of these options, then take them off the table.
Yeah, I totally agree, Nick. I don't think you as a board should take an option public if you as a board have some hesitancy or would be uncomfortable supporting it if it came back.
Because, you know, as board members, I mean, there is, yes, there's engagement piece, and yes, there's, there's all the feedback part. But at the end of the day, some people at this table have to make these decisions. And you can make some of these decisions to wean this down before we go to a referendum without having to survey 22 options or 17 options. I mean, you guys can say, based on your experience, based on how you feel about it, based on how you think the community may feel about it, this is, this is the direction we're going to go. I, I don't think you're winning people over that don't want their school closed, because they had an option to say, I didn't want my school closed. I just, I'm sorry, I just don't think you're, you're going to, oh, well, because they at least threw this out there, all of a sudden now I feel better about it. I just, I, I think it's different if you're talking about a new building versus a remodeled building. But I think when it comes down to it, if I really don't want my school closed, I don't want my school closed new, and I don't want my school closed used, and I don't want my school closed. I just, I don't know what you're going to gain from some of these things. I could be wrong for it, but I just think that most people are going to say, if I don't want my school closed, don't show me any options that include me closing, closing school. I only want to focus on the options that keep all six open.
Nick? I just, I, we didn't really talk about why we don't like, or we're not in favor of option three. And I, when I look at that one, that particular option, I look at as, we're not just changing two schools, we're changing three. We're kind of tearing HP, or Hudson Prairie apart. And with the budget for all those three options, I don't know that you're gaining anything.
Correct.
So it's a very expensive option for very little gain. So that's why I can go, you know what? No, that one doesn't give us the things that we want.
It's not a cost-effective option. It's not like all of a sudden this option is 50% less and you get so much more. It's in the same realm, because the buildings that are left need the same amount of work.
Yeah, it only struck me as being viable to consider, because we in theory would have our fifth graders with more direct access to some of our middle school programs. Whether you could find a way to make it work or not, world languages, band choir, tech ed, schedules are hard. So I don't know that it would automatically work, but that's one reason. And then if you are pessimistic on enrollment, and you think that maybe we do continue to decline more than we're projected to, you maybe could envision a day when fifth graders move into the middle school as a 5'8" building, and now you're down one more building. And you wouldn't be changing grade configurations at that time. That said, you can just simply change grade configurations if that ever happens to. So it's, it's not a one... So it's, it's not a one or the other. I would say if the board wants to eliminate three, but still have it presented to the community as what it was in our discussions, and that it's currently not being considered, if the community wants to add in their comments, we really want option three back on the table, we could easily walk that fine line in facilitating the discussion with them as well.
Okay.
So where did we land with five? Because my sense has been that, I don't remember if it was you, Nick, or you, Jamie, who said, I'm not sure that five is an option that we actually would ever put out to referendum. Five is the, if we aren't able to pass something here, is probably what we would have to do? I mean, so...
You're talking about going to five buildings? Is that what you're talking about?
Option five.
Nuclear option.
Yeah, I mean, so to me, that, too, doesn't make sense really to present as an option.
Well, I think, I think what option five, what option five is, is instead of having five A, five B, or it's, it's basically just five.
I do think there is potentially some value in sharing it, being upfront, that it's not the board's desire to pursue this option, if we, again, I can't speak for you, but if you're comfortable enough with me facilitating, suggesting that the board isn't excited about this as an option, but the board is serious about addressing our, our operating budget challenges and our facility needs, and if we can't find a partnership with the community on a potentially more viable option, this is something they may have to consider. I think that might be the benefit of sharing it, is not to scare, not to threaten, but to bring some reality to the tough decision that you, as a board, have to make.
I agree. I think that's why we're showing the, the option of keeping all six, and that's, that would be the reason for showing that option as a, certainly not as a, something scary, but as, as reality. There would have to be changes.
Right, and I, yeah, again, I think of the example of Stillwater, and I've heard that more than once in the last three weeks, is, you know, don't pull a Stillwater, where you are talking about one thing, and then you end up doing something else. And I think, I want to be optimistic, I want to be, but I want to be a good planner as well, and if, heaven forbid, we were to put up referendums for operating and capital projects that ended up not passing, option five is a very, all of a sudden becomes a very real and option that this board may have to take. So I think that community deserves to have that explained to them sooner rather than later, and frankly, I could envision that 70% that has no connection to any of our schools, no students, no employees in their family, et cetera, option five might be actually very palatable, and actually preferred to a big segment of our population. So, Rob?
So, if I may, a question for Brian. So if we go to referendum with an operating levy, and it fails, is our revenue limit frozen at all?
So, that was a reference to legislation that was enacted a couple of bienniums ago, and that had to do with the low revenue ceiling adjustment. So, so if you went to a referendum, a district went to a referendum, and they were subject to the low revenue ceiling adjustment, that would have been a penalty if, or, you know, they wouldn't have gotten what they would have otherwise received, because they had a failed vote during that time period. So, in your scenario, that would not apply.
Okay, thank you.
But, I guess I'm, what I'm hearing is that we would like the various options presented, but when it comes to at least option three, and option five indicating not preferred for the 2023 referendum.
Kind of, we aren't, we aren't going to spend a whole bunch of time talking about these, these two tonight, because they're not the direction that the board is willing to head.
Right. The, what about option four, in that same vein? Do you want it mentioned, and then with some kind of caveat that limited discussion, given that there's not a lot of support at this time, or do you want it just?
As much, as much discussion as options, option two.
I'd be interested, obviously, in other folks' take, but if we're making that decision based on what we've heard so far from parents, I think we could say, based on what we heard from parents at the four parent listening sessions, we think it makes sense to spend more time talking about these two options, and it would be option one and option two. I mean, that, that's my gut, based on what we heard from parents, that there wasn't a lot of enthusiasm about other... I, I did have one question, because at the bottom of these, we've got listed the definitions for the priority one, two, three, four, and N, but I think only priorities one and two are referenced, correct, in the documents? And I'm wondering, because when you look, and it says priority three, three to five years, will require replacement or repair within five years. I could see where someone might be asking, well then, why the heck aren't we talking about those? Because what are you going to come, you know, that analogy that we're using about operations, and then when you need a roof, you go get a loan? Well, if we've got all these things in priority three that we're going to need to address within five years, why aren't we talking about them right now? Are you going to come back to us in five years for another capital referendum to take care of those? So just having it there, I think, prompts the, I don't want to hide it, but having it there prompts the question, and actually prompted the question for me, because I don't think we're building into our operating budget increased dollars for ongoing capital improvements, correct?
So, what happens with priorities three and four? If you, when, go back to the Wold report, or you go back to the Kraus Anderson report, the bulk of the dollars are in priority one and two. I mean, that's, the vast majority of items are basically well past their useful life, or are expected to deteriorate. And so, there's not a tremendous amount of dollars in priority three and four, and the thought process behind that is, we allocate a million to $2 million a year for capital ongoing maintenance, that that $1 to $2 million a year would be enough to kind of tackle those as they come up over the next three to five years, six to 10 years, if priority one and twos are taken off the table, is kind of the thought process behind that.
And those priority threes and others, every option, as you do a more intense renovation, or you build new, are going away at the same time. So any scenario where we build a new building, right, those are gone, they're not needed anymore, and you build two new buildings, we've eliminated those current and future capital maintenance dollars of every priority level.
Yeah, and only because we've been talking about priority three and four since 2017, since Kraus Anderson started talking about it, we all of a sudden took that off the table. I, I guess I could see confusion that way as well, but...
Mr. President?
Yes.
Could we, could we then either just not list them, or add on that they'll be addressed through operational, operational budget?
Yeah, I don't know that they add value here, quite frankly. I put those on there for my own definition when we first started, and I could easily see removing them if the board agrees.
Well, at least if they're going away with new construction, they should be off that sheet, referencing new construction options.
Well, and you can see, as we've, we've shared, and it's still on the, it's on the website, too, people can see that there's a 12-page summary report from Wold, and it identifies what those items are, and the costs associated with each of those items, or aggregate for each of the, each of the priority levels for each building. And that's, and that's, again, that's why the bulk of the big items, or the expensive items, are all sitting in that priority one and two. So maybe instead of it being priority one and two, based on immediate need, and zero to two, we can say, okay, priority one and two definition is basically, it is the boilers, it is roofs, it is the big-ticket items, and then, because they're, they're almost identical across the, across the, the actual items are identical across the buildings, of what a priority one and a priority two is. So we can get more examples of what they are, versus timeframes in which they're going to come due. Because even some of those three to five-year ones, as I think, I don't know if it was Robert or Bob said, you know, when this report was done a couple of years ago, you're now moving into that zero to two mark, because we're two years past where we were when they originally did the facility study. So, we can, we can change it up, we can take it off, but I know some people have had questions as to, what does that look like? What are those items? And that's why we've had that report, and I think what we can work, what we can work into the meeting, even at the beginning of the meeting with people on November 1st, is just say, when we talk about, I don't know if we want to call it maintenance needs, priority one, two maintenance needs, or whatever, here's a list of what we're talking about at EP Rock, here's the list of what we're talking about at Holton, here's the list, you know, I mean, it's, it's like 10 big items, yeah, basically, it's that document.
So this, we could also put a couple copies of this at each table, right, for each school? So it would be six sheets of paper at each table, if people wanted to see it.
I think what confuses people is the timeline in which they're coming due. That's probably the bigger confusion than the actual items on the list.
So it sounds like, if there's consensus at the board, remove the descriptions from summaries, but provide the specific resource with a little more definition, building by building, for each?
Table.
For each table.
Okay. Yep.
I also think, and I don't know if it's through comments, or, or in writing, but that we somehow need to address this, why the heck haven't you been good stewards of our buildings all along question? And if I'm understanding the answer right, I think a version of the answer is, we could have taxed you more every year along the way and saved money, so that we could have fixed these things while they're broken. We didn't. We kept taxes low along the way, choosing instead to go to referendum when we needed to replace things. I mean, if that is in fact true, that feels like a reasonable explanation, but I think that there are folks who are wondering, why on earth do we have, why didn't we take care of this, the way that you would your home? And so I think to somehow respond to that question is important, because I, we're hearing that from, I feel like, a lot of directions.
Yeah, and we can speak at the macro level as to, not that this makes it right, but you're not alone in this exact situation. You know, school districts are, 80-plus percent of your budget is consumed by operating expenses related to staff in your service business. That doesn't leave much to tackle large-scale capital maintenance projects. I'd argue you have $2 million a year, $1 million, $2 million, right?
On the high end, it'd be $2 million.
That's one of the better capital maintenance budgets, sadly, in the state, when it comes to dealing with the routine annual things. But it's also the emergency fund, when a boiler goes down unexpectedly, or a major repair is needed. So you can't plan every year, I'm going to do $1.5 million worth of big stuff. The stuff that's here is generally such large-ticket items that you would be losing, you'll never even get neutral. If you tripled, I'll make up a number, or quadrupled the operating commitment to capital maintenance projects, you still can't keep up, because the scale of them are so large, and you lose buying power in most years at 5%, and last year 15%. So, again, it doesn't make people feel better, but it is a fundamental challenge at times with the school funding formula, in that you don't have the ability to increase taxes to do capital maintenance projects like this, without going to referendum. There was a window of time where, in theory, you were under levying. I suppose you could have, arguably, but that's hindsight, I'd argue. Like, we're, we're kind of living with the current situation, and...
Go ahead, Mom.
And what goes into that, too, is obviously our revenue is based on the number of students we have in the district, and we keep, you know, not mentioning enough that that is going down, or has gone down. So that gives us very little room to, to adjust for that.
Kate?
I just, I just thought we should maybe tie up what options we're going to present at the November 1st meeting, and I just wanted to give my opinion. I'm okay with leaving four out, but I do think leaving five in there is a good thing for people who, just community members that don't have kids. Maybe they have a strong opinion that that would be something that they would be agreeable to, so I think it should at least be presented.
Well, is there any, again, we're mentioning three, but not in in-depth manner, and representing that it's not currently a likely option to get further consideration, but that the board has considered it. Do we want to do the same for option four, which is, again, five sub-options that, Matt, I mean, it's an option that Matt can touch on, but we could, do we, do we want that to have the same kind of detail that, when we discuss option two, for instance?
I would say similar to option three.
Is there anybody else? Okay.
So if I understand correctly, we will present one, two, and five in detail, and we will mention three and four to the community as options considered, but at this point, the board has kind of tabled or held off on exploring them in more detail, unless we hear otherwise from the community. Is that a fair way to phrase that?
I think so. All right, unless, Rob, did you have something to say on that?
Well, just, not on that. I've got a question on option five.
Okay.
And, you know, when option five was presented at the two-parent meetings I was at, everybody, overwhelmingly, was like, my gosh, don't put eighth grade at the high school. And so if, if we're, just a thought, and so if we're talking four kindergarten through fourth-grade elementary schools, is there, is there a way, because we have declining enrollment, perhaps we have space already at the middle school, to actually have fifth through eighth at the middle school, and maybe harvest some of the classrooms at Prairie, and then leave the high school intact? Because I think option five, if it's legitimate, eight through 12 is, at the high school, is probably not going to be...
Yeah, those are basically option three. Right?
Well, except with Prairie, you'd still have K through four there.
Not in our option three plans, right?
Not in option three, but in option five, Prairie would be K through four.
Correct. I think what you just described, though, is option three, basically. Other than the nuance of, is, are we grabbing some classrooms from Prairie to make it part of the middle school, so that it's more of a 5'8" model, than a standalone fifth grade in Prairie, and...
Yeah, so to be clear, Prairie would be K through four, maybe perhaps, if necessary, steal some classrooms from Prairie, and then add that to the middle school, so we could do a five through eight.
Well, and I think the thing is, is...
I see what you're saying. Thank you, Rob.
If we got to a point where we couldn't pass a referendum, I think that's when that discussion happens. I just don't think that that's, unless you're really thinking like, hey, that's the direction we want to spearhead, I think it absolutely makes a lot of sense, because it could be that how we could get the number of buildings down without needing as, as much space. I just, unless you guys are thinking, hey, that's a solution, moving forward, that we would like to take to referendum? If you're not, if you don't think it's a solution, move forward, take to referendum, then I think it's one of those things that, we can talk about it, and that can be one of those conversations where, if we don't, if we can't pass this, this is basically what it might look like. It might look like fifth grade going into the middle school with a couple classrooms at Prairie, to try to do that, but I just, one of the things that we're running into as well, is we want everybody to know that we've tried to think of every different option, and that we've, but then it's also, how far do you have to explore that option in order to say that you thought of the option? It's kind of like the five-building option. People will say, well, why didn't we, you know, didn't you think of five, closing only one, instead of closing two? Yeah, we looked at it, and ran some rough staffing numbers, it saves about 1.3 million a year versus 3 million a year. But the reality is, too, the likelihood of potentially having to go back and close another building in the next four or five years is pretty great. And so then, the question becomes, do you become, kind of like that Stillwater, hey, we passed a referendum, and now you're closing my building again? You know, because I will tell you, they will forget that we said, well, there's a chance that we still might have to come back and close that other building, because just like there are people that have said, why didn't you solve this with our last referendum? You never told us you'd be back, and we were pretty clear on that. So I think, you know, we have a pretty good direction on, you know, whittling it down to kind of those three options. Now, I think, the big thing, I think what we want to get from this, is not even really, do you want to go with six? Do you want to go with four? Do you want to go, because it's basically almost option one versus option two, is essentially what it is. It's really what we need to get from people is, which variation?
Right.
Because, you know, at the end of the day, the board's going to say, we're going to move forward, and this is kind of what's coming up here next, is, we have to move forward with X, Y, or Z, or we have to get a certain lot of savings, or we have to go for an operation referendum. How much is enough? Like, if we go to referendum, or if we're going to renovate these buildings, or are we going to build new? What do people think is the tolerance of the community, or what they're, what they're willing to support? That's probably more important feedback to get on Monday, or on Tuesday night next week, than...
Well, and it's such a, in such a unique situation, based on what Brian just presented, is, you know, we have all these options that range from make up a number of 35 million to 115 million, all of which can be tax-mel rate neutral. we have all these options that range from make up a number 35 million to 115 million, all of which can be tax mill rate neutral. So it's not as though the 115 is, you know, four times the tax impact as the 36, which, which is a unique situation you're in, given your 2016 referendum and all the variables Brian just went through. So we can definitely go that route.
But I think that's what we, that's what we need, that's what we're going to need feedback on. Or at least I would think as a board, you're going to want some feedback on is, do people think doing priority one and two is enough? Do they want somewhere between a new building and priority one and two? And what does, you know, what does that look like? Depending on the options. And then at the end of the day, the, the thing that's going to determine whether or not you go with option one or option two is going to be, what are you willing to do with an operational referendum? I think that's going to be kind of the.
Well, I was going to ask a question about that because I think that we need, when we look at the options presented under option two, I'm not seeing the extrapolated operational savings. I mean, if we don't close any schools, this is what your operational levy is going to have to look like going out 20 years. And if we do consolidate and have the pros and cons that go with that, but one of the, I guess depends on how you look at, but I would see it as a pro is the operational savings of, and we had that one document at the last meeting was over 20 years. I mean, the operational savings alone could be close to 100 million, which would pay for the most expensive option two E. You know, on the, from the, from the capital side.
Right. That annual five or eight million dollar mark is deceptively small.
Right.
Right? Cause that's, that's a per year as opposed to the, the capital levy is an amount that's spread out. So it's the total over 10, 20, whatever years. And so there, it's not an apple to apple. Yeah.
And those operational savings, only a very small portion is heating and cooling and the physical running of the extra two schools. It's the staffing and those costs, you know, are not going to be just a $3 million difference in the first year. By the year, time we get to year 20, it's substantially more than that when you extrapolate it out. So I think that there should be someplace on, you know, where that is pointed out, the difference. So that folks don't have to read all the way down the page or whatever if it's.
We, we do have those numbers in each of the options, you know, that range on 20 year savings. You know, obviously option one doesn't have any savings because that's our current.
Right.
Staffing, but all the way that range anywhere from, you know, 77 million to as high as 101 million, which I guess the option that's not on here, I call it option six, which is five elementaries. Cause somebody asked me to look at what was the staffing savings on that. Well, we saved about 38 million over the course of 20 years. But we, and we, and Matt and I, when we were building the bottom of this worksheet, trying to figure out, how do you phrase that? And have it make sense to people?
And that would be any level of accurate. I think that was the, we have no idea what the biennial budgets are going to do next time around, let alone the next 18 of them or whatever, 10 of them that it's going to take to get out 20 years. I mean, we could just say, assuming all things equal to today, the savings over 20 years is, or something like that.
And that's, and that's really what we've done is, you know, when we amortize these out, we basically figure it on about a 3% increase in staffing. 5% increase in staff cost the next two years, and then 3% increase in staffing cost every year after that. In order to get to, you know, if in, in year one, it's $3 million and let's say option two. By year 20, option two is $5 million. Because if you're, if you're not replacing those staff and you just kind of keep adding, if they were there, you'd be giving them 3% raises or, you know, whatever it happens to be, trying to be conservative with that. That's how we get to that, that saving. That's no different than when we try to calculate mill rate out or what our bond payments are going to be and stuff like that. I mean, we, we have to make some assumptions. And it's the same thing as Bonnie's items there. Which kind of leads us into the next part. I guess, is there anything else construction wise that people have questions about?
And I'm not going anywhere. So if we want to come back, that's fine too.
But we do want.
Anything more for Matt? All right. No, you were going to talk about communication plan or what, what do you want to discuss next?
Well, I mean, there's two things. I guess I did share with the board, had Tim and Tracy put this together. It's not attached to the agenda, but you should see it in your email. It's actually a list of all the times we've communicated with the board, the public, the staff and parents about these needs. We've talked about elementary needs at no fewer than 30 board meetings since 2019. Tim put down the board meetings and then the minutes and what was talked about. We've addressed it with staff, no fewer than 12 times. We've addressed it with just specifically to parent emails on six different occasions. In the community, we've had, I think, 18 different times we've communicated directly with them. So when you have people out there saying, boy, we're moving really fast or boy, we're not communicating. That's just not accurate. That's just, that's not true and it's not accurate. And it's a, it's a. It's, it's just nice. So you can see on that document that I shared with you, you can see exactly when we started talking about this. Now, we started talking about closing elementary buildings in October of 2021. So over a year ago, we started putting options out there that involved closing Holton and closing Willow River. So this isn't anything new that we've just all of a sudden rushed the last month or so. These were options out of the five options that Wolf came up with, three of the five options had us closing Holton and Willow River.
And there was a quarterly newsletter that went out on it. I remember when you wrote that Nick, and then I asked you, well, how many parent calls did you get when that was put in the newsletter?
And we didn't, we didn't get very many. When I say very many, I can count on one hand.
I think, I think Nick, I appreciate the count. We can feel good that we have tried to communicate and perception is reality. So I mean, for us to say, but we've 10, 30 things, it doesn't matter if you're the parent or community member who is saying, it's the first time I've heard of it. You know, so I think it's, I think we can feel good that we have attempted to communicate a lot of times. We have sent out the communications, but we have failed to communicate with a whole bunch of people because their perception is this is the first time I'm hearing about this and that's the perception that matters right now.
Well, I think this was in relation to the board saying that it seems like we're moving very fast because the people sitting around this table have been involved with at least 20 of the 30 times we've talked about it.
I think the concern though is, are we moving too fast to bring the community along? And so if the community's perception is, wait a minute, I'm just starting to think about this, then it doesn't matter if we as a board know we've been talking about it for two or three years. It's, is the community ready to move on this or not? Cause if they're not, then it's too fast. I mean, so I think that's what you're hearing, not like, oh, we have, we haven't talked about this enough. But it's, we're not, you know, a sense like, is the community feeling like they're ready to move on this? Because again, perception is reality, no matter how many really good efforts we've made at communicating.
I agree with that, Bob.
And with that perception is reality, I'm, I'm more concerned about how, how we're getting the message out there to some of the things that we hear. And these are mostly going to be your parents again, that are affected. But when they say, I mean, the mantra is going to be no, no super schools, you know, no mega schools. You know, class sizes obviously will be larger because we're going to these mega schools. So I don't know if it's, I'm sure Matt will do a great job, but, but I mean, how do we get past that perception and get that message to the people? Because that's.
Yeah, and we've asked, we've asked you this before, but this is one of the reasons why, you know, you know, Bob and I asked Nick to, you know, see that this meeting was televised because we've heard you say this before. But for the benefit of those folks watching, you know, when folks use the term mega schools, you know, how would is that? Our schools are at 588 River Crest capacity, EP Rock. Those are our larger schools. North Hudson isn't there yet and obviously Willow and, I mean, Willow could be, it's 120,000 square foot building. But just talking about for elementary schools, what would be considered a mega school?
Well, kindergarten through fifth grade, I will, I would say a typical elementary school. Meaning if we could start from scratch and build all brand new buildings and chunk up our district, we probably would target five to 600 kids in those school buildings. That's four classrooms ish per grade level kindergarten through fifth grade. I, I can't define mega because it's, in my opinion, it's, it's kind of a, just a hyperbolic term to make something sound bad. There, you can't define what mega is from me to you are two different things. I'd probably say a mega elementary school is more than a thousand kids. I doubt any parent would agree with me. They'd all think it's 750 kids or whatever the number is. So I don't want to define what that term specifically references because there is no definition. I would generally say the majority of school districts that have the ability to control enrollment, school size, number of sections, or they're growing, so they have the ability to build buildings at that rate, are trying to build four to five section elementary schools.
So four to five section per grade?
Correct.
And how having four or five sections in a school keeps class sizes consistent and lower as a whole.
And it allows you to effectively, and I'm not, no staffing expert, but I've heard many tell me that it allows you to most effectively staff a building in terms of all the specialists that it takes to support those students, gym, art, music, the list goes on and on.
And Nick, is there any disparity in test scores between our large schools and our small schools and our.
I would say it's significant, or statistically insignificant between our largest and small schools. I think, you know, what I'm getting at is it's really hard to combat all of that type of misinformation when you have us running numbers on 20 options. It's much easier for us to be able to address misinformation and different things that are out there when we have a more refined message. And I think that's kind of part of what, what I was getting at with some of the stuff is we have been talking about a lot of different options for a long time. We need to get down to a more refined message so that we can do those things, so people can feel like they're in the, they're, it's a more, more refined discussion because we, because we have so many options still out there, it is a high level discussion. And I think as we have seen, people become more and more engaged when they start to see impact that is going to personally impact them. When they start to see my building's going to close or my taxes are going to go up or my taxes are going to go down. And so that's why it will be extremely important for us to get to that sooner rather than later because the longer that it takes us to get there, the more difficult it is for us to carry that message as we, as we work, as we work through it. So, and I think the thing is where we were successful in our last referendum, sometimes people are remembering what we did from January 25th to April 5th and thinking that was the stuff we did prior to the board deciding on a referendum. And it wasn't. It was, that was the stuff that was done once we had a direction, once we had a question, once we had what we were going with. That's when we could get the most potent message out there. That's when we could go to all of these different groups. That's when I did about 45 or 50 meetings. Matt came up and did community meetings when we get that, that message. And that's when I think most people engage is when there's a question to engage about. And that's, that's important. The reason I bring this up is just the way that we, the best way we can communicate with people right now, having such high level information is to put it in newsletters, to email it directly, to put it online, to do all of these different things. That's our, that's right now, the best way we can communicate. And we did put out a survey last year in, in October, November, December.
The only other thing I'd offer on timing is I, in my experience, if you wait one month, one year, one decade, we're, we're not going to have this room full of people excited about closing elementary schools. It, it is not an easy conversation to have, but it's critically important. It sure seems, given the operating budget situation that, that you're in, like many districts. So time is important, but it's not, I just want to make sure we all don't think it's somehow going to mean that we suddenly have a lot of support for closing elementary schools.
The other point that to be addressed, doesn't have to be, I think, a long time, but to make the point on November 1st is part of the consolidation is the, with the efficiencies. I mean, the same number of students, assuming same enrollment, we can reduce what 14, 15 sections overall by consolidating and without going outside our classroom guidelines. And in fact, promote consistency. So we don't have 14 kids in one second grade class in one school and 28 in another.
I would say that was a common theme at the parent meetings. That was a misconception was you're just going to raise class sizes in order to do this. And, and I tried to repeatedly say, these are all based on district class size standards. These are not increasing that to the point where we would need to go above those standards.
But, but, but it is 100% true to say that if you're used to going to a class of 13 at Holton for the last four years, your class size will be bigger. And if you're Willow River and you're used to going to a class size of 13 or 14, your class size will be bigger. If you're at Willow, or if you're at Rock or you're at Prairie and you're used to going to 22, it might drop it to 21, you know, or 20.5. But the one thing we will not, you know, we're not raising or projecting to raise is the class size guidelines as we, as we look at those.
If we can get an operational levy passed and if we can get this capital referendum passed.
That is, that is correct. And you know.
If we can't do those two things, then class size guidelines are back on the table as to whether or not we raise those or not.
If we can't make some of these changes, we will have to make other changes. And this is kind of leading into the next discussion now, which is the operational levy is basically. Yeah, you're good. But, but basically the operational levy is, everything we're talking about with facilities is to maintain programming. It is to maintain class sizes, is to maintain effectiveness as it relates to attracting and retaining staff. It is all about the kids, contrary to what some people out there would like to say it's only about the numbers. Because if we can't get these type of savings through this direction, we will have to get it in other ways, which would be things like raising class sizes, cutting programs, reducing the amount of opportunities kids have to do different things in the district. And so this is 100% about the education that kids are, are receiving so that we can avoid those, those types of things. But even with, even if we went with an option two or an option five, where we go down to four elementary centers, that doesn't get us to where we need to be long-term. And that's why, as Rob brought up a couple of times this summer, there's an operational ask that goes along with this. It's not just a facility ask. The facility piece helps us offset how much we need to ask for in an operational referendum. And I don't, Tim, do you have the, the document related to operation? Bonnie, does he have your operational document? Either one, the one that Barrett did is fine. Do you have that, Tim, that you can put up on the screen? Do you want to take quick five minute break while we kind of transition to operational? Or do you want to get through this and then what do you want to do, Jamie?
If you're ready to go. I mean, we can take three minutes right now.
All right. Take three minutes. Make sure we get the right document up.
All right. Mics are back on and we are back in session. So now where we are in the agenda, if you're keeping track with your programs, is the budget adoption and levy certification. We don't have Brian Bruy here every year that we do these, but Brian, while we're here, we appreciate you sticking around to help explain this.
Thank you, Jamie. So this first part is, is really a continuation of the discussion we were just having. I think it's been clear and consistent that the capital planning that you're doing, the facility planning is in no small part about the savings that would come operationally. And generally speaking, that's, you know, capacity utilization at your facilities, the amount of staffing that, you know, you could not need to pay for going forward, which then results in recurring savings, right? And so the reason that's become more of a discussion, not only in this district, but all across the state, is the funding levels on a per pupil basis have been relatively flat over the last decade. And so while there was a discussion that this district little by little has had unused revenue limit authority in prior years. And you've made your year over year budget development based on, you know, maintaining the program at the level that the Hudson School District expects. That additional capacity that went unused is now not there, right? So that gets us into the 20, you know, the, that'll be where I hand it off to Bonnie. And she talks about the, the current budget adoption. talks about the current budget adoption. However, we use a multi-year budget model where we can layer in assumptions of your current status, your current funding level, the enrollment trends going forward, which current baseline projections indicate that the enrollment will be reducing district-wide. We have to make some assumptions that, you know, what are future bienniums? So we're in the second year of the biennium where there was zero per pupil on the revenue limit. Next year, there were some proposals. We took a midpoint to try and project. What this is, what baseline B is, is the governor's proposal, but 50% at a per pupil revenue that's 50% of what was discussed, plus 100% of special education reimbursement.
100% of the proposed special education reimbursement.
Yeah, of the proposed, right.
Which would be 45% the first year and 60% the second year.
Yep. Yeah, so I'm saying that as a setup to this because if any of that is wrong, so is this, right? So we have to model scenarios to project what do the surpluses and deficits look like in future years. And so using what we're calling baseline B, again, 50% of the governor's proposal for per pupil revenue limit, per pupil categorical aid, then we assume growth in your equalized valuation. You know, as we've discussed, this year it was just shy of 17%. In future years, we're using 5% in the modeling. But with that revenue limit authority and some assumptions on the expenditure side, which Nick referenced earlier, a 5% wage for the next two years and then stepping down to 3% thereafter, what that shows is doing nothing, if that's the revenue authority, you balance the budget this year, but it's going to show a 3, a 5, a 7, a 9 deficit. So a structural compounding deficit because of the growth year-over-year in the expense line item. So as this baseline, this is not showing any of the savings that we are discussing with, you know, consolidating six elementaries to four, right? But this shows an illustration of, given those assumptions, those revenue assumptions and expenditure assumptions, where, you know, what will you need to balance in future years? So with that, this middle row is a reference to the fund balance position, which was referenced earlier, a positive surplus year in '21, '22, which built the fund balance up, which is why you were talking about maybe going from 10 million committed to 15 million committed to capital. And then your debt levy at 12 million and 5, we're maintaining it at that number simply because of what I described in the first segment, that no matter the range of scope, we can accelerate the principal repayment and keep that payment at 12 and 1/2, right? And so you pay it off quicker, or if the scope is larger, you pay it off longer and at the same level or lower. So as a planning assumption, we kept that number the same so that we're not double counting that portion of the levy and mill rate. So what that arrives at down here is your current levy for '22, '23 is 54 million, which is about an $8.84 mill rate, which is about $1.10, as Nick referenced earlier, lower than last year. In this scenario, that mill rate stays in that ballpark while the levy increases. It's in that 4-ish percent, 4 to 5%, which is why the mill rate would stay relatively level with a 5% growth. However, the biggest thing that you would spend time on in future bienniums or budget years is how do you balance that revenue shortfall?
And I think it's important to know on this situation right here, those are not a running cumulative number. Those are the deficits at the end of each individual year. And so what you see in the middle there, the fund balance, is you see our fund balance go from 41 million this year down to 15 million over the course of four years, if we do nothing. And that's, you know, part of the conversation that we've had of why is there a sense of urgency for operational savings? Why is there a sense of urgency for an operational referendum? Now, understand, this is the 50% governor's proposal, so this is basically DPI's proposal they put out. It's about 75% of what they're actually asking for, because when you take 100% of the special ed, what they're asking for, plus you take half of the per pupil amounts, it comes out to be about 75% of the whole amount. This is, still might be too, some people might argue it's too generous. I mean, if all of a sudden they only give us half of the special ed increase and half of the per pupil increase, add another $2 million to each one of those deficits moving forward. Okay, when we start looking at trying to cut 5, 6, 7, 9 million dollars out of our budget, those are hundreds of positions. I mean, we can't, I mean, it just doesn't work. The district will not look or feel or operate the way it does today if we have to make those kind of cuts down the road in order to keep things going. And so the whole point of this discussion isn't so much the budget adoption, but this is really about why there's going to be a need for an operational referendum. And in this model, if, you know, basically what we're looking at is if you go with an $8 million worth of savings, the first few years, you have a surplus, and then you're going to have some years where you're going to have some deficits. And that's, overall, it shouldn't add out.
So, Tim, if you could scroll up to the next block, please. So what Nick was just describing, you know, with this tool, once you build the base revenue assumptions and you can then adjust different scenarios to see, to compare and contrast. So keeping in mind, we didn't, we still haven't solved for the expenditure here. What we're doing is adding additional revenue that is, would be voted on via a operational referendum. So in this scenario, excuse me, we're adding 5 million of additional revenue authority, which then reduces the amount of shortfall. However, you still have room, you still need to make up the balance. So one of the ways you can make up that balance is the savings from consolidating from 6 to 4, right? Because that's not currently in here. So the combination of a 5 million additional revenue plus the 3 million recurring of savings or expenditure reduction?
It'd be the next scenario, isn't it?
No, so the next scenario is putting 8 million, so again-
Essentially similar.
Yes, so go ahead and scroll up to that. So this scenario is plugging, you know, adding 8 million of revenue, which then plugs the shortfall. It still doesn't, like, we still have not adjusted the expenditure for a savings between a 4 and a 6 facility. So if, you know, we could run multiple pages of this, but I tried to isolate the difference between asking for 8 of revenue to balance or asking for 5 and then know that you're going to save the 3 recurring expenditures by consolidating operations of your elementary facilities.
What drives the differences above the yellow line in those two scenarios? I'm confused about why those numbers are ending up different.
Is this what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, why in scenario one and scenario two? Why do we have different fund 10 revenues, different fund 10 expenditure? What's different about, other than the non-recurring referendum?
The $5 million in the yellow? It's added to the fund 10 revenues up at the top.
Yeah, so instead of a negative 3 million, you're adding 4 million. So that's a $7 million swing in the fund balance.
Okay.
But again, as Nick mentioned early on in the discussion, you know, even if you show a surplus here, it's offsetting that, what'd you say, it would get you through like eight to nine years?
Get you probably close to eight to nine years. You know, if all things being equal, a $5 million operating referendum with going down to four elementaries, essentially cutting about $3 million worth of expenses, should put the district on a good financial footing for another eight to nine years before you'd have to go again, potentially if we don't see some change in our enrollment or if we don't see a better revenue from state.
Bienniums, right? So this visual only covers the next two biennial budgets, right? So should there be more funding there, that would change what this looks like as well.
It's just really hard. You start projecting out, I mean, you're making assumptions on top of assumptions on top of assumptions, so you're kind of-
So if we don't pass a referendum or an operational referendum and the fund balance goes down to compensate for it, how does that affect our bond rating, our ability to borrow in the near future? Keep going.
Yeah, so if the fund, the question is if the fund balance goes from the 41 million up down to a 15 million, the fund balance is a talking point of the credit review with the Moody's analyst that assigns the district's credit rating. What would be worse in this visual than just the fund balance reducing would be that, is there a, you know, are you ignoring it at the board level, right? What are the plans for addressing the shortfall? Because every, not every, but almost all, many, let's say many, school districts in the state face this exact visual. It's just a matter of what does the board do to address it, right? And so our discussion about that is way more important than the specific number here. I mean, this is an extra check mark, right? But they also understand that if you can't address these, then this number's not high enough because eventually you're going to run out, right? It's not a renewable source.
Yeah, I mean, based on this, if we do nothing and we go for no operating referendum, even with a reasonably good case scenario here, the district will eventually go bankrupt. I mean, we will burn through all of our savings. And that's why, you know, the administration's suggestion or look at this was to look at reducing the number of elementaries in order to cut budget and then combine that with an operational referendum. But if people have other ideas of how they would like us to address this, we would be all ears, but we will-
Buy lottery tickets. That's what we can do.
How do we explain a sustained taxing for a sustained fund balance that is double what our fund balance policy is? What's the rationale behind that?
Well, what's going to happen is we're going to take off 15 million of that if we, so that 41 million right now, that includes the 15 million that we'd have designated for capital projects. So if we do the capital projects, that's going to drop down to 26 million. So if all of a sudden we get down to that far right column over there, we won't have fund balance to throw at capital projects. On top of that, we'll incur additional expenses because we'll have cash flow borrowing because of the way that we operate. We only get cash payments from the state at certain times of the year. We have to make payroll twice a month. And so some districts get themselves into trouble where they don't have enough cash on hand. They have to actually borrow 45 days' worth, 60 days' worth, 90 days' worth of cash in order to make payroll. So we'll take on an additional expense related to that. That's part of the reason why we keep fund balance where it is, so we have good cash flow operations as well.
So just to be clear, that number in the gray that says fund balance for '21, '22 at 41 million, that's not just unassigned fund balance, that's total fund balance?
That's fund balance, yeah, total fund balance.
And keep in mind, that was coming off of a good budget to actual year, right? So the year prior, it was 33. So, I mean, you know, that's what allows for the additional discussion about committing 5 more million towards capital.
And people say, well, how did this happen? Well, we could see this financial cliff coming because when you give us one-time federal money for reoccurring expenses, it's going to create an issue. And so we tried to craft our budgets the last two years without using the S or federal funding as meeting for reoccurring, you know, for reoccurring expenditures. So we've tried to sock it away, knowing that we may need it to bridge the gap of, you know, a couple of years. Because even if we go down to four elementaries, we don't go down to four elementaries in the '23, '24 school year. So we may end up having to eat a $3.5 million deficit. So that's why we sock some of this money away, knowing that we're going to potentially have to eat into it a little bit. Some people say, how do you go from $8 million surplus to 0, 12, some of these negatives? The biggest answer is, it's declining enrollment. And we've had declining enrollment exemptions, so they've given us some extra money over three years to kind of brace for this. That starts to fall off, and that's why all of a sudden you start to see a cliff, you know, a very big cliff in a hurry. And like Brian said, I think somebody that's at somewhere close to 70%, somewhere around there, don't quote me, that might, districts around the state, they're going to experience some of the same stuff. The biggest difference is we are in a strong financial position, that we're not talking about having to cut people, you know, two months from now or next year. We can weather it, but we have to implement a plan long-term that'll get us there.
And again, I know, Rob, I want to credit you with, you know, the notion of going with a combined capital referendum and an operating referendum. But Brian can speak to this, can Matt, about other districts trying to match some of these financial challenges that come down the road with a combined approach because I think it's more moderate rather than ask for more than we need on operational, doing the capital and the operational together and trying to be optimistic that they'll both pass. But yet the messaging is going to have to be very clear. If they don't both pass, we are going to have to come back for A, another operational referendum, and B, at some point, we're going to have to make these capital investments. Just, we don't want to do it, you know, as things are breaking down, so.
Do we have a sense right now this only goes out for academic years, but as far as the non-recurring referendum goes? I mean, would we be going for five years, for 10 years? What are we thinking?
We'd be recommending a reoccurring referendum.
Which is no term one?
It's just built into the new budget number.
Okay, so it's just on the, the reason I ask is it's on the non-recurring referendum line here, so I was thinking that we were thinking a limited term, but we are assuming this is a permanent ask. Okay.
Yeah, the Hudson has a history of reoccurring referendum, and Dave is our district historian here with the longest longevity. I remember when we did one for teacher salaries and computers, back when computers were new. But still, we had a technology investment, we did a, had to have a reoccurring referendum, but it wasn't as large.
Right, they were small. And the other thing with that is that what they really did was added to our under levy because if you aren't then levying to the max, you've just increased your capacity but actually didn't increase your revenue.
No, but when we did it, I think the total evaluation of the district was like 1.3 billion, and we're now at 6.5 billion.
Well, you went for a total of 1.76 million dollars in 2001 for reoccurring.
See, it was yesterday.
And then you went for another reoccurring in 2005, or starting in 2005, that one failed. But the two in 2001 both passed, and we still use them today. And that's what's pushed our revenue limit up.
Rob, you have a question?
Yeah, so Nick, just a, I guess, point of clarification. Last time we were together, you had said, you know, basically the savings, if we were to close two schools, if I remember right, on average is like 2.4, and you just said 3 million. And then the other question I had as it relates to our annual meeting, capital projects, you listed at $12 million, but, and that was just last month, and now we're at 15?
For what's that?
So capital projects and our committed and undecided fund balance? We listed in our annual, in our annual meeting document, $12 million, but now we're saying 15. And again, that's great news. I just want to make sure I'm not missing something.
Well, first of all, the conservative estimate has been 2.4, 2.5 is what we told people last year when we didn't dig through the numbers. Then this year, we went through and we built staffing programs on all five options. And then I sent you guys the actual document that broke that down, you know, the cost per option savings. And they were all around 2.8 to 2.9, right around there, $3 million savings. Because also added in there was utility savings from closing those buildings and some of those pieces. As far as the annual meeting document, I'll have to pull that up.
It's page two.
So I think at the annual meeting, the committed-
So I think at the annual meeting, the committed for capital was 10 million dollars?
For last year.
For last year. We're going to recommend putting 2 million this year into that, which would bring you to 12 million. And then I think what Nick was talking about would be there'd be another 3 million in undesignated, we could move to committed to get to the 15.
But you do that at any time during the school year, that's not a function of this time. At any point, you can, you can designate money into certain projects and you can undesignate it as well, it just takes a motion of the board. I'm just saying, it looks like based on our information that we got when we finished up our audit and everything else, is that we could probably put more towards it than just the 10 million we originally have committed. Bonnie's recommended in here, at least add another two, but we could probably go another three on top of that.
Okay. And then Brian, just a quick question, follow up on a conversation, I guess, we had earlier for my ask. And so as it relates to the reoccurring, there was a balk at the inflation factor, is that something we can't do or on a recurring?
Yeah, you can't, so the question that I answered was, can you ask a question that indexes an amount to the expenditure budget? And, and what I've been told by legal, you know, sort of bond attorneys who craft the resolutions for you, they need to be as, an amount in there. So, you know, for however many years, if it's non-recurring or if it's a recurring amount, you know, that amount stays in there, but I don't, I'm not familiar with a escalating figure unless you actually physically escalate it, right? Like, you know, a million, million 300, million 600, you know, like you.
But then it wouldn't be recurring.
You could have it that way.
But you would have to put that amortization schedule in the actual question. You have to say in 2023, we're going to ask this, in 2024, we're going to ask this, 2025.
But then it wouldn't be reoccurring.
Well, you could, and then you would say, once 2030 happens, it just is frozen at that moving forward.
Right.
So you could have it escalate over 10 years and then have it frozen. And that's essentially, I think, what Ray Sein did when they went to kind of pass their, their stuff, is they, they set it out and they spelled it out. And that's how it came to a billion dollars over the course of like 20 years.
But the question had each of those.
Each, each one of those amounts, at which years it goes up, it starts to become very complicated.
But Brian, when you say the, the referendum question would have the amount, this is where it would be, it would be the 5 million, not a difference in the mill rate, because in your examples between baseline and scenario one, the number, the amount of the mill rate designated for that 5 million would, goes down because the valuation of the district goes up 5% under your assumptions, right?
So to answer your, the, the specific question, the question would say 5 million. Like if you're asking 5 million, it would say 5 million on the ballot. And that's, that's all it would reference. Your communication materials would estimate what that impact on the mill rate would be.
But I was just looking in your scenario one compared to baseline, you know, it's a 77 cent difference in mill rate for that, to raise that 5 million, but by the time you get to year four, which is 2026, 2027, it's down to 67 cents, or 66 cents.
Yeah, and there's a lot of things that'll continue to happen in here, but that's why I was looking at the average of those first four years, because growth will matter, like what actually happens there. State aid will matter, reimbursement after the first year, right? You know, so that's, that's why I was using the rough estimate of like 60 to 70 cents for that first 5 million. And then if you scroll up a little bit more, it's roughly another 40 cents or so for this additional 3 million.
Right.
So it's, you know, somewhere in that dollar-ish range, 90 cents to a dollar, which is interesting because last year you were 993, you're dipping down by a dollar 10, and then you're around 993 in the future if you layer in the full 8 million. Again, I don't want you to get too focused on that because there are a lot of assumptions that we don't know what the state's going to allow for in the next bionium budget.
And that also includes a 12.5 million dollar debt service.
Correct.
So if all of a sudden, through those scenarios that Brian talked about before, if you say, hey, we're not going to go for a $100 million referendum, we're going to go for a $50 million referendum, now all of a sudden that debt service, instead of being 12, 5, it might be 10, 5. So that's going to lower that overall mill rate because 2 million will come off of that and that can go towards, you know, towards the operational.
But again, also, this is raising the revenue capacity by 5 million, asking for this, we don't have to do it in every year, it's just raising the ability to raise that money.
Correct. You, just like you've done for the last 20 years, you've had the ability to raise it higher than you actually did it, right? This is no different. All, all this is saying is, do the voters authorize the calculation to increase by 5 million? You still will set the budget to what you need the budget to be up, up to a max of that additional 5 million, but you've proven as a board for 20 years that you, even though you had the ability to, you didn't, right? So.
Well, we also proved it in the last referendum for the high school and the middle schools, we asked for bonds for 90.5 and we did 89.9 instead.
And came in well under those estimates as well, the, the total debt service.
And, and some of the things that can happen here is, so also, if you don't need the 5 million operationally in the first two years, you could say, well, can we use that 5 million to offset the referendum? So you say, okay, there's two years worth of, that's 10 million dollars operationally, we could apply that to the middle school. So instead of having that 15 million dollars with the middle school, there's only 5 million dollars worth of the middle school on the referendum. There's options, once we get down to whatever it is that the board decides, it's just the, the, the big difference is if we stay with six, more than likely, we will need at least an $8 million operating referendum. If we go with four, we would need around a $5 million operating referendum. That's just, that's kind of how it, how it plays out.
Okay. And just for macro reference, November 8th, there are 41 operational questions on the ballot, and in April, there were also 41. So 82 questions in just 2022, seeking additional revenue limit authority across the state.
Out of roughly 400 school districts.
Correct. 422 school districts. And, and that's on top of last year, right? I mean, this has been a, an ongoing discussion. It, the, the thing that's new and different for you is that it's now on your planning horizon, right? Whereas some, many of those questions are a renewal of a three-year or a five-year, you know? So this has been an ongoing cycle for many districts across the state, just, you know.
I know success rates overall in the state have been pretty good over the last couple of years. How does, speaking to ones where they're, do both a capital and an operating, do you see those split or do they generally both get approved or both get turned down?
It all comes down to the plan and the communication of that plan. Like so, so we've had referendums that it's a facility solution that would reduce the mill rate, reduce taxes, and still gets voted down because they don't like the plan, right? So it still comes down, what most of this discussion tonight has been about, what next Tuesday is going to be about, what all of your community engagement over the last year and the parent meetings, that is where the success fail happens, right? It's not so much that it's one question or the other question or both, it's more about, do I understand as a voter, why I'm approving this? Like why am I, why is this the right solution for the future, right? So I, so I know I'm dodging your question, but it's because there's no real clear-cut evidence of one or the other, right?
Okay. I just didn't know if double questions have a lower passage rate than single questions.
No, not, not, there's not, not a correlation, you know.
Thank you. All right, any other questions for Brian? Otherwise, I think we have still an action item and that is to improve the mill rate for the next budget.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Be resolved that a tax in the total amount of 54,577,871, $41,761,041 general fund, 12,591,460 debt service fund, and 225,000 community service fund be and is hereby levied against the taxable property in the Hudson School District for school purposes.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Bob. Any further discussion at this point? Bonnie, did you want to add anything?
I just wanted to go over something real quick. So one of the things, it was kind of what Rob had talked about, that 2 million dollars. So this year in our budget, we did add 2 million dollars to our asset revenue, that was from previous year's expenses. So it would be the certified staff planning time for the 2021 school year, the four extra days of staffing from the 21, 22 school years, and the Chromebook lease. So what we are recommending is that we put that into the fund balance and then we designate as committed with the capital. So that would bring that from 10 million to the 12 billion.
Okay, for capital.
For capital.
All right, so that's the change in the funds. And then I guess to answer the question, because we've got the resolution in dollars and cents, but what does that mean for what the mill rate, that by passing this resolution, what does that do to the mill rate?
Sure, so some major highlights of the operating budget, there was a 16% increase in state aid this year, so that was about 3.3 million dollars. Again, we talked about the property value increased 16.6%. The tax levy, we estimated a 6% increase at the annual meeting, that will be down to a 3.77%. And your mill rate will be, our, our mill rate will be reduced from the proposed 9.93 from last year to 8.84, so a decrease of 11%.
And compared to the annual meeting, it's a decrease of what we told them it would be, what?
9.03.
9.03.
Yep.
So it's another 19 cents, less than what we said just last month?
Correct.
Okay. So people can start doing their calculations on their property values and, but they'll still get their shock in December when each of the municipalities send out their statements, but still, this is what we're planning on and trying to be good fiscal stewards. Is there any other questions or comments on the motion before us, which is to approve the resolution to set the tax levy? All right, seeing and hearing no one commenting, then all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it and the tax levy resolution is unanimously approved. Next on our agenda is also Bonnie, that's the monthly financial update.
Yep, so you do have the budget report, the deviance for this month was post-employment benefits, just, it was a timing of the payment compared to the previous year, computer and equipment rental. Last year, we had a one-time security deposit, which was not required this year. Then we, again, from last month, I think I talked about the building repairs from the hailstorm, those are, those bills are starting to come in. So there was an increase in that. Payment to CISA, I think it was just a timing issue of when the bill came from last year to this year. Again, the same thing with the paper purchase, vehicle repairs due to the hailstorm, workers' compensation, we've had a change in our billing. Last year, we paid quarterly, this year we pay monthly. And then special ed fund, in the past, you've, you've done that quarterly, I'm not exactly sure, we've always, what I've done in the past is just do that at the end of the year as a reconciliation because you're not really reconciling it to anything, so we will just make that adjustment at the end of the year.
Okay. And with those variations, I guess extrapolating it out over the whole year, still, we're a quarter way into the budget and we just set our tax levy tonight, so things are looking on track.
Yep, we're right on, yep, we're right on track.
All right. Any further questions, comments? All right, then our last item is Dave. Saving the best for last, teaching and learning report on inclusive practices and.
Thank you for acknowledging that. I couldn't agree more. I thought we might want to give it a minute too, I was expecting sort of a crowd, they must be caught up in traffic or something.
Yeah.
All right. Do you want this opportunity to leave? I saw that. All right, good. Well, thanks for staying. All right, so tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about inclusive practices specific to reading intervention. A lot of exciting work is going into, into a lot of the things we have going, especially mainly at the elementary level, but it extends beyond that as well. So the word inclusive and inclusive practices is used quite a bit in education. I want to talk a little bit about specifically what we're talking about. We're talking about providing supports for students as close to their typical learning environment as possible. And this is something that Tara and I talk about quite a bit when we do our learning support services collaborative work together. This is a big thing that we'll be focusing on. Last year, we provided an update on inclusive practice that was co-teaching. This is a different, a different view of an inclusive practice that we're bringing to bear. So again, we're talking about practices that are delivered as close to their classroom as possible, usually in the classroom, sometimes in adjacent space. It's delivered in close collaboration with or directly by the classroom teacher and often embedded right into the regular learning experience. If you go to the next slide, why our inclusive practice is important, this first little stat here is something you hear a lot, it's actually embedded in our district scorecard, that early identification intervention is incredibly important. So if you're a third grade student and not reading at grade level, there's a great likelihood that you'll continue not to read at grade level and that, but the next part of this is the most important, absent intense intervention. It doesn't mean there's no way, it means we need to do something. So it's a good point at which we need to say, if we have students that are still not at grade level, we need to put some time and energy in getting them the supports they need. It's incredibly important that those supports are as inclusive as possible. When this, this stat has been around for quite a while, but a lot of districts, and we were no exception, responded in a way that we said, okay, we need to provide intense intervention. And a district like ours, we're quite a, pretty resource-rich, we have a lot that we can bring to our students. A common practice was to create programs that actually pulled students out of the classroom and decreased inclusivity. We're trying to get them back into the classroom and build the skills in the classroom. So that's one reason why it's super important. Then there's some soft reasons, we get into these three Es, engagement, efficacy, and effectiveness. So students will be more engaged if they're learning with their classroom peers, and we know if they're more engaged, they're likely to learn at greater levels. We also know that if we're bringing these interventions and supports into the classroom, teacher effectiveness will increase because we're going to bring, we're going to bring professional learning opportunities to teachers, so they're able to more effectively meet the needs of their kids. And then on top of that, teacher engagement and their efficacy, their belief in their ability to make a difference increases. So it's good for everyone all the way around. Now specifically, what are we talking about? We're talking about prescriptive intervention program and our reading teachers are doing amazing work with this. Lisa Schoen, Assistant Director in Teaching and Learning, is doing a lot of the work here, instructional coaches as well, so a lot of people working to support this idea. When we talk about prescriptive intervention programs, if you think about a prescription from a doctor, they'll answer these questions. So you go to the doctor, they're going to say, okay, so based on what you bring symptomatically, what should we do? How long are we going to do that? What are the resources we're going to use that might be medical treatment, might be physical therapy, could be anything? And then how are we going to know when it's working? And then a really important question, when do we stop? They're not going to give you medicine and say, take it forever, they're going to say, okay, if you reach this benchmark, then we can either back off or we can stop. Those same skills, those same questions are answered when we talk about intervention for academic need. So what's different in all this from what we currently do? I'm not going to read through in every bullet point here, but essentially what we're talking about is changing to a system where students are more engaged in the classroom experience. I'm going to highlight a few. Reading specialist, I think, is the most important one. Reading specialists are our most highly trained and skilled practitioners when it comes to reading instruction, but also reading diagnosis. So we want to put them in the best position to offer the most support possible. So instead of the reading teacher serving primarily as an instructor, working with small groups, they'll still be doing that some of the time, but we want to free up their capacity, so they're also increasing the impact of classroom teachers by training them. They're the ones that will be giving the prescriptions. So in this comparison, the reading specialist is the doctor saying, okay, so you're coming with the student, saying, these are the needs, we're looking at the diagnostic information we get from Fastbridge and a variety of other assessment screeners that we use, and saying, this is what this student needs, why don't you try this for six weeks, use this specific program, and then we're going to keep an eye on things, we're going to track, we do what's called progress monitoring. Every week, we're going to be looking at the data, seeing if we're moving in the right direction. And about every six weeks or so, might be longer, might be a little bit shorter, depending on the student and the circumstances, take a really deep dive and say, is this working and do we need to adjust? This, again, increases the teacher impact, increases inclusivity because this is happening as much as possible in the classroom. It's funny, I was thinking, I was working with, with Matt and some of his associates and just in talking about what might a school look like if we were to end up going to referendum, we're talking about these inclusive spaces. How do we make sure we're not creating schools where we inadvertently create segregation by creating intervention spaces scattered throughout the school as opposed to bring them to the classroom? So if we are offering addition. So if we are offering additional support, it's happening with the classroom teacher in mind. Um, so that's a quick overview of what's different, but some of the goals that we're talking about, if you want to go to that next slide, thank you very much. Again, we talked about teacher self-efficacy. It's incredibly important that we would support teachers in this. This is not a cancel programs, cancel service, or reduction of support, this is using all those same resources, but reallocating them, but one of those reallocations of resources has to be to the professional learning of teachers, so they feel that they're gaining their skills. This isn't just pushing the kids back in without support. Um, the other thing is that one of the goals, as you know, we have an achievement gap in reading that we're trying to close. We feel really good about what's happening at the elementary level. Um, this, I can't get into deep dive in the data, still embargoed, but what we do know is, our achievement rates are increasing when we compare to the rest of the state, um, and this, this isn't very specific data, but we're at about the 92nd percentile in achievement at the elementary level right now. That's in both reading and math. We know it's actually higher in math than reading, so, um, it, it's very impressive, some great things are happening. This is very laser-like focused on students that need intense intervention, that's exactly what we need right now to take that next step up in our achievement. Obviously, we want to positively impact students and staff engagement by providing the most meaningful support as close to, um, their learning environment as possible. Then that last one is really, really important when we talk about what we're trying to accomplish. We, we talk about numbers, we talk about the test scores and the assessment data, incredibly important. But we also know that if students learn to love to read, they're gonna continue to read, they're gonna continue to learn to grow, and all of a sudden, all that intervention support becomes less important, because they're gonna learn, um, more, in a, in a more natural setting that, uh, is engaging and supportive of where they're going. Teachers are excited about this work, the reading teachers, again, doing a great job. Um, next month, we'll be bringing a report on the science of reading, which is a little more general than this, but a really exciting initiative that we're kicking off that will complement this, because it will add, um, add some tools to the teacher's tool belt that will help them meet the needs of all of our kids. What questions do you have?
Anyone? Anyone have questions or comments for Dave? Dave, I want to thank you for your report, sounds like, you know, we're doing good things in, in that regard, and I like the idea of focusing instead of, you know, broad brushes, so that's great. All right. Now, seeing any other questions, thank you again for the report, and, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Rob, second by Heather, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.[1794.63]